Okay. It is 7:01 and we're going to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Here.
Mayor Protem Martin?
Here.
Mayor Badelaus?
Here.
And our salute to the flag today will be led by local veterans from American Legion Post 238, Veterans of Foreign Wars, the VFW. Drink with this for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to all of you. Now, do we have a closed session report?
I need to report.
There is no reportable action tonight.
Thank you. We have several proclamations today. And the first one will be for Greg Cochran. Is Greg Cochran here? I see him. Thank you. Whereas Greg Cochran has served the City of Pacifica as a Parks, Beach, and Recreation Commissioner from July 2005 through August 2019, acting as chair for two terms and a voting member during the course of his service on the commission. And whereas these 14 years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the City of Pacifica, working towards the betterment of the community through the promotion of parks, beach, and recreation, and monitoring the beaches to ensure that they will remain fun and safe. And whereas Greg served as the president of the Pedro Point Surf Club for 25 years and sits on the Board of Directors of the Coalition of Surfing Clubs, USA. And whereas Greg has contributed in bringing revenue and recognition to the City of Pacifica through his involvement in the surf committee, including organizing the annual Big Chill Out Surf Contest. And whereas Greg's passion and expertise of all these things relating to the beach have earned him the distinction as being known as Pacifica's Beach Ambassador. And whereas Greg has shown his dedication to Pacifica and the surrounding communities through his participation on other boards and commissions in San Mateo County, including the Skyline College Presidents' Council. And whereas Greg Cochran's commitment to this city and the community it serves deserves special recognition and appreciation, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica, on behalf of all of its citizens, hereby extends our sincere appreciation and thanks to Greg Cochran for his 14 years of dedicated and distinguished voluntary service to the City of Pacifica, done this 12th day of November 2019.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, Madam Mayor, and the distinguished City Council members. This proclamation is truly an honor and I feel very blessed to receive it. Yesterday, people were thanking me of my service in Vietnam. Today, I would like to thank our City Council for their hours of work and dedication to make Pacifica a better place to live. We don't always agree on all the topics, but you also deserve a "thank you" for your service. Working with Mike Perez and the entire staff of Parks, Beaches, and Rec Department has been a dream job. Pacifica's PBNR Department is recognized throughout. San Mateo County is one of the best Parks and Recreation Departments in this entire Bay Area. Our public works, City, management, staff, and all, it's been an absolute blessing to work with all of you. I want to thank you again for this wonderful honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.[413.34][413.34](applause).
Hey Greg. Hey Greg. Can we give you some kudos, too?
Does Mike want to say something?
We want to give you some kudos. Can you go back there for a second?
Oh, sure. Does Mike want to say something?
Oh, yeah, maybe. We have August, too, so... Greg, thanks for your dedicated, unwavering commitment to our parks, our beaches, and recreation here in Pacifica. I know you moved away, but I think we're still going to see you. I hope we still see you on our beaches and in the ocean, and I want to say thanks. Talking story. Yeah, and Greg, I want you to know, it was an honor to serve with you, really. You taught me what it really meant to be a commissioner, and I so appreciated that. And just watching you do your thing, it was really inspiring and actually a lot of fun. And so I really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
I want to thank you for your leadership. You're the kind of guy that gets it done, and you show people how to be a leader, just by doing what you do. And I'm very grateful to you. Thanks.
And I also wanted to thank you because I know PBNR runs the gamut, from toddlers in the preschool all the way to the senior citizens at the community center. And they take, and all the ages in between, for Easter egg hunts, July 4th, Christmas tree lighting, everything, that you guys do it all, you and the staff, and Augustus back there, too. And it's all worked out very good. And I know the childcare is excellent from my time on the school board. We never had any issues or complaints about the daycare the city provided. And that has to do with the leadership of the staff and the commissioners looking to be sure that that was done. So, thank you, Greg.
And I want to say thank you that, you know, 14 years is a long time to do one thing. And you're such a positive, happy person all the time. I really always enjoy seeing you. And I appreciate that, your service. And Mike, did you want to say something, or just standing?
I'd like to also thank Greg because he's been a commissioner longer than I've been the director, and in a lot of ways, that's very comforting for me. It's very comforting for our commissioners that we have. And I think in the proclamation, the best thing you can say is that Greg has definitely been the Beach Ambassador for Pacifica. He knows what's happening. He knows what's going on. If there's anything amiss, he would let us know, give us a call, work something out between parties. And he was so on top of that. It was just a pleasure to have that. So now we've got some big shoes to fill. But we have his phone number, so we can call him. So I do thank Greg as well.
And I just want to say one more thing, Greg. So my story about Greg is that, you know, he's a surfer and he's a, you know, local talk. You talk story if you're a surfer, right? You've got a lot of waves that you have to talk about. But one of the first times that I planned a party with Greg, it was either Eco Fest or the surf movie or something. We're trying to figure out the food. And Greg says, "Well, you got to have some sticky white and some max sal." And he goes, "Oh, you got to have this, you got to have that." I said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, whoa. Max sal and sticky white? Can you please translate that?" So it was rice and macaroni salad. So since then, Greg, I've been calling you Max Sal behind your back.[635.29][635.29](laughing). I think I told you that story one time. I don't know if it stuck, but now it will. So it's a great Max Sal. Let's take a picture.
Yep.
Max Sal, sticky white.[653.13][653.13](laughing). Thank you guys so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I'll see you tomorrow. I'll surf here then. Do that again. Give him one exercise.
Okay, on to the next proclamation. In recognition of August Murphy, whereas August Murphy has served the City of Pacifica as a Parks, Beach, and Recreation Commissioner from 2006 through June of 2019, acting as chair for two terms and as voting member during the course of his service on the commission. And whereas these 13 years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the City of Pacifica, working towards the betterment of the community through the proclamation, I'm sorry, through the promotion of parks, beaches, and recreation. And whereas August, serving on the PBNR Commission Chair, was a key contributor on the Joint PBNR Open Space Shorebird Protection Subcommittee, working to establish guidelines at the Pacifica State Beach for the benefit of the snowy plover. And whereas August was instrumental in working alongside staff, community members, and fellow commissioners in establishing the Pacifica Dog Park. Whereas August worked tirelessly to help keep Pacifica clean by participating in beach cleanup days alongside other community volunteers. And whereas August Murphy's commitment to this city and the community it serves deserves special recognition and appreciation, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica, on behalf of all of its citizens, hereby extends our sincere appreciation and thanks to August Murphy for his 13 years of dedicated and distinguished voluntary service to the City of Pacifica, done this 12th day of August 2019.[791.01][791.01](applause).
I feel very honored to have received this. It's been a fun run, for the most part.[841.32][841.32](laughing). If nothing else describes Pacifica, it's parks, beaches, and recreation. You know, we don't have a big shopping mall. We don't have a sports arena. We don't have a cinema. But we have parks and beaches, which results in recreation. And I've really been proud to have served in the capacity of a commissioner to contribute to those aspects of Pacifica, because that's what we really stand for. And it's been a real big pleasure to have worked with everyone involved, from Director Perez on down to the volunteer recreation, you know, member, to the senior citizens, Jim Lang, deserves probably dozens of these proclamations, to, you know, the childcare, public works. I mean, it's just been phenomenal for me. And I, you know, I am really proud to have been a part of this. And I just have one more thing to say. If City Council would consider giving me a raise, I might reapply.[903.63][903.63](laughing). Thank you very much.
It's August.[911.13][911.13](applause).
So August, I want to thank you, for starters, for being so nice to me when I first started on the commission. And I remember you said something to me. You go, "You got it. You just, you got it." And I was like, "Oh, my gosh. Okay, thanks." And it just made all the difference in the world, so thanks.
All right, and look where you are today.[930.13][930.13](laughing).
August, thank you. I also had the pleasure of serving with both August and Greg on the commission. And you are also very dedicated and have served on every Earth Day. And you're always, "Hey, can you go out and get another load of trash? Yeah, sure. Where do you need me to go?" Just always willing to pitch in, and thanks. I appreciate it, and we will miss you.
Thanks very much for your work with the snowy plovers. That's been a big piece of the educational component in the schools that Mike's talking about. And with the fencing and the way that that was handled, I think it was an excellent project for the city.
Thank you. You know, I was on a subcommittee for nine months on that snowy plover, but to me, that, the way it worked out, you know, was just so rewarding for me.
I have to, I mean, I never ran across you as much as I did Greg in different things, but you were always there, behind the counter, passing out the dog things or whatever else PBNR had up at the different events, fog fests or the tree lighting or whatever. And I do know it does take dedication, especially to watch the full gamut of PBNR and all that they do. So thank you very much to you and Greg for all the years of service you did.
Thank you.
For all the ages you did.
13 years again is a really long time to serve, and I thank you very much. And now, if we can, is Greg still here? If we can get those surfers to not walk through this snowy plover habitat, they might stand a better chance.[1032.76][1032.76](laughing).
You know, if I'd known Greg was going to retire shortly after me, I probably would have held out to be the one.[1039.83][1039.83](laughing).
Mike?
I also want to echo that, again, he's, August was here before I became the director. And one thing that we started when he was the chair was he would come in and we would meet regularly before the meeting. He and I, right when I became the director, we formed the Shorebird Protection Committee, and August was the chair at that time, and also kind of ran that group very well. We had to work with a lot of different opinions and stuff. It's really important. And also, one of the reasons why he was on the commission in the beginning was he loved dogs, so he was very instrumental with the Dog Park. And it was really great. And again, both these guys, I believe, if I would have told him that he had one more year to get on Greg, I could have got him to stay, you know, one more year. But he was kind of, he finished his term off and took off, so. But both of these gentlemen have done a great service for the city and for me personally, so I appreciate all their hard work.
Thank you. Picture. And the next proclamation. I get to read a lot tonight. It says, "A proclamation declaring November 7..." Whoa. The date?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Seventeenth through 23rd?
Twenty-third, yeah.
Okay. Declaring November 17 through the 23rd, 2019, as Pacifica Against Hate Week. Whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants whose strength comes from its diversity. And whereas the Constitution enshrines equality on all individuals, regardless of race, gender, religion, or political views. And whereas across the United States, there exists alarming and frequent displays of hatred, as well as divisive and discriminatory rhetoric, which serve to deepen divisions and normalize hateful and racist discourse and other bigoted views by emboldened hate groups and individuals. And whereas the City of Pacifica is dedicated to preventing and opposing hate and intolerance in our community. And whereas education, compassion, and cooperation are key to unlocking, understanding, and embracing differences between people. And whereas the City of Pacifica City Council maintains an engaged community, a healthy and compassionate community, and maintaining a safe community. As major policy goals adopted with the fiscal year 2019, 2020, City Council Goals and Work Plan, and the activities and message within the United Against Hate Campaign align with these goals. And whereas the City of Pacifica seeks to join other Bay Area, California, and communities across the country in this United Against Hate Week as an important step in bringing divisions, declaring our commitment to inclusivity, and strengthening our communities, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica does hereby proclaim the week of November 17th to the 23rd, 2019, to be Pacifican United Against Hate Week, and declare the enthusiastic support of United Against Hate activities in our community for this week and each and every day beyond, done this 12th day of November 2019. And we do have these posters that people can pick up in the city offices and post in your windows of your businesses and throughout the week of the 17th through the 23rd.
Can I talk?
Yes.
And we also are, if you're interested in planning an activity for you, for Pacifica Stands United Against Hate Week, you can reach out to anyone on city staff or myself. I'm helping to plan those things. We do have a talk that is planned on November 22nd at the Sanchez Art Center. Begins at 5:30. Talk begins at 6:00, and it will be titled, "Why Inclusive Language Matters." We will also have a peace flag art project that same evening. You'll see a little bit more publicity coming in the next few days, but please spread the word, and thank you.
And if the council members wouldn't mind, we'd like to get a photo holding the posters. You could do that just behind the dais or come forward, whichever is easier.
Just stand up here. Okay.
And Sam Bautista is going to give us a presentation on the SamTrans Micro Transit On-Demand Pilot Program update. Excuse me. He's going to introduce the representative.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Tonight, we have SamTrans Representative Kirsten Waggoner, who is going to give you a presentation regarding the SamTrans On-Demand Program. It's mid-year evaluation, so with that, I will introduce Kirsten Waggoner.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Kristy Waggoner here, Director of Planning for SamTrans. Nice to see you all again. I was here, I think, about a year ago, talking to you about our pilot concept, which we launched on May 6th of this year. And I'm here to just take a few minutes to give you an update about the performance of the service. So tonight, I will remind you what we did, the pilot service we launched in the Lindamar community, and talk to you a bit about the criteria we've developed for our evaluation, and then talk to you about the results, some proposed recommendations, and next steps. So you'll recall, we converted a deviated fixed route shuttle called the Flex Pacifica that was operating in the Lindamar community to an on-demand platform about six months ago. We really were interested in seeing an apples-to-apples comparison to really understand what this on-demand technology could do for us in terms of productivity and customer experience. That being said, we kept the hours of service the same, Monday through Friday, 6:15 to 6:30. The local fare was the same. The big difference is that trips were requested, or trips are requested, using an app, a mobile app, or customers can call into our call center. And the vehicle is dynamically routed in real time, and we provide, we're calling it corner-to-corner trips within Lindamar. So it's not quite door-to-door. We do ask passengers to travel a short distance to pick up the shuttle. Customers can watch the vehicle's real-time position in the app, and, yep. And we looked at Pacifica because we really were interested to see if microtransit can be more effective in providing transportation in areas where big bus service is not always the most efficient mode. And that really fits nicely on our coastside community. You know, as you know, San Mateo County is a very diverse county, very large. We have a bayside that has its own challenges, and we have a coastside. And you have different, you have different transportation challenges out here. So we were really interested to see, is this a good fit for the coastside, some of our lower-density communities? We wanted to see how the technology felt. Internally, we wanted to really understand that before-and-after comparison. And what was really nice about Pacifica is we had some flexibility with the operation. The Flex Pacifica was operated with a contractor. We already had a smaller vehicle in place, so a lot of flexibility with start date, with adding more vehicles if we needed to. We don't have that flexibility with a lot of our in-house operated service. So we've developed four buckets, if you will, for our evaluation criteria. The first is performance. What do the numbers tell us? Have we retained the riders that used to ride the Flex Pacifica? The operations experience. What is the training like? How do the operators like using a tablet to get routed throughout the day? How does the dispatch, what's the dispatch experience? We have, obviously, the customer experience. We want to make sure our customers like this. We've done surveys before and after the pilot launch. We're paying very close attention to the complaints that come in, when they do come in. And lastly, we really just wanted to understand how this technology feels, how easy is it to train on this, what are the updates feel like, et cetera. And very quick, top-level summary, our ridership is still a challenge right now. We have a little bit lower ridership this year than we did a year ago, but we do think there's really some room for improvement. You may recall, when we were scoping out this pilot, what we felt was most important is that we got it functioning well before we started to try to push more riders onto the service. And we're still somewhat in that, you know, let's get it operating optimally. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about that in a few slides. What's great, though, is the customers really love it. I was out at Lindamar today, speaking with customers, and there were a lot of on-demand riders, and they liked it. They use it regularly. They're happy with it. So this is a trade-off that I think our, you know, the district is going to do a lot of talking about, is what is the trade-off between, maybe we're not carrying as many riders as we used to, but the customer experience is much better. And I think that that's just a dialogue that we have to have. One thing we've learned quickly is that microtransit has a home, but it may not be the right solution for all types of trips. For instance, lots of students coming from Terra Nova at one time. That has been a challenge for us. And so a lot of other transit agencies that are piloting this technology are seeing those same results. A microtransit has a home, but it's not necessarily good for moving large groups of students or passengers from A to B.
Can I ask, can we ask a question now?
Sure, of course.
So the algorithm has room to improve. Is that because all the students are requesting? So the algorithm has room to improve, is that because all the students are requesting at the same time?
At the same time, yep. And we have maximum parameters set in there, like max ETA, and we are really pushing our technology partner to relax some of those algorithm parameters so that we can make sure that everybody gets a ride.
So it would error out if there were too many requesting?
Correct, yes. You got it. And that is called the seat unavailable message, and we have about 7% of our trips get this message where riders cannot book. And we think that that's really important to get down to zero. We want to make sure we're not having any trip denials. And one vehicle does honestly have limitations. We only have one vehicle operating. We're really pleased with what we're seeing, and I'll share some more information with you in a few slides.
Another question on Terranova. I know a couple of years ago I had to deal with you guys from the high school district in SamTrans because the Terranova run was contracted out, and you were sending one bus, but two was contracted. So if that's pretty much a foreseeable thing that the kids will be getting out at 2:45, why can't you send big buses?
We do actually send big buses on every day but Wednesday, and Wednesday they have the early out. And that is the day that the Flex Pacifica did that transportation for the students. But I think it's something that we need to consider, quite frankly, as we are thinking about microtransit as a permanent technology, as a permanent service. We, SamTrans, needs to figure out that Wednesday trip because the on-demand isn't the optimal solution. It is a big bus, that's the right solution.
Why can't you send a big bus on Wednesdays?
I can take that back. We can, we can take that back.
No, it just seems kind of, you know, logical.
Yeah. I don't have a firm answer for you, but I'm happy to take that feedback back. And lastly, our fifth sort of high-level bullet here is that, you know, internally we've done a good job, I think, of making this work, but we, SamTrans, have some systemic challenges to address if expansion is desired, or we'll need to look at turnkey solutions which are available to us. So our performance highlights, really quickly, we surveyed the riders in September, and we found that the vast majority of people riding the on-demand rode the Flex. I think 87% of riders were former Flex riders. So that's great. We feel like we have retained a lot of the ridership. I mentioned that the ridership is a little lower than the Flex was a year ago, and we're talking about eight to 10 trips a day. So the Flex carried about 90 to 100 trips a day, so we're at about 80 to 90, so we're not that far off. This is a small universe, this is a very small number of rides, but every ride counts.
But it's not because of that trip denial and the Wednesday thing?
We think that when we do get complaints, not the Wednesday thing, but when we do get complaints, it seemed, they seem to surround that trip, that seat unavailable message. And we think that it would make sense if a rider used to ride and they couldn't book a trip, that they might look for other options. And so we're trying to track down all the riders. We do have contact information from the survey we did before the pilot to have that, to get that feedback from them, to see what can we do different, you know, try us again, see what we can do.
Got it.
One thing that's great is the average wait time is 12 minutes. That's pretty low. The Flex used to run every hour, so we also think we have room to improve there. We can maybe push that ETA max a little bit greater so that everyone can get a booking. And we're seeing some very strong account conversion of everyone who is downloading the app. We see 50% of people creating account, and creating an account and taking rides, so that's great. Quickly for the operations feedback, the drivers say using the app is easy. One thing that is really important is incorporating that human touch. So we've empowered our operators to make sure they're paying attention to the riders, especially when we converted, to make sure we weren't, you know, missing passengers who might be standing at a bus stop waiting for the Flex. And the app actually allows our operators to go a little rogue, if you will. So if they see someone who is standing in a place that maybe the driver wasn't expecting them to be based on what the app is saying, they can say, okay, I got this person, swipe and go pick them up. And that's really important. We need to be human, we're public transit providers here. One internal challenge is that this is technology that is powering our operation, has, it touches our customer service center, the planning people, my team, we're involved in it. And this is a startup company. These companies are putting out updates frequently, and so making sure we have the right support for training and getting, you know, when there's app updates that we have, that the customers know when there are updates to the backend administrative console, that we are doing the right training internally. That's been somewhat of a challenge for us. We've done a decent job getting the pilot going, but it really speaks to whether or not the district should look at a turnkey solution for future expansion.
Can you explain that?
Sure. So a turnkey is a, well, let me back up. We purchased a license for this technology, and we're operating it with our vehicles, our drivers, our customer service. There are companies out there that do that all for you. So they bring vehicles, they bring drivers, they do all the customer service and all the updates. And so it's just a turnkey service. And that's something that, as we're learning about this, we're thinking about. We think that that could be a good fit. Cupertino just launched a pilot with Via. Via is our provider, with I believe 10 vans. So we'll be watching them very closely to see what kind of productivity they're getting out of that service. This is a heat map. We just thought it would be interesting if you could, if you could see where the boardings and alignings are occurring. And not surprisingly, we see a large concentration of activity at the high school, at the shopping centers, at the community center, and at the Lindamar Park and Ride. I was just at Lindamar tonight, and I saw at least, I think, 10 youth passengers boarding the on-demand around 4 o'clock from the park and ride, so. Customer experience has been mostly positive. People really do like it. The people I spoke with today, they liked it. We are seeing a decent chunk of our trips being made through the phone, through our call center, and this is actually double the number of phone-based trip requests that other properties are seeing. It kind of speaks to the demographic of the rider that we're carrying out in the Lindamar. We know that we have a lot of seniors who don't have the data plans or the smartphones. And so it really, again, speaking to how we embrace this and expand it, the district will just need to think about, you know, the call center resources that we have in place. Another factoid is that 63% of those who filled out the survey thought it was better than the Flex Pacifica. So I thought that was a nice, nice feedback there. And lastly, the technology bucket, Via's been a great partner. They've been very responsive. They've been helping us with troubleshooting issues. They're really responsive to our feedback with functionality changes in the app and in the, on the backend administrative side. Internally, again, just we need to make sure we have the right resources available if we are going to be expanding this. And we're just thinking about, you know, whether this might be a better, a turnkey solution for us as we look to expand to other areas. So what we're doing now is we're going to monitor ridership for one more quarter, and then I'll be going back to our board in February with a recommendation. We need to take action by May of next year. We have a one-year pilot term. So we're really pushing to reduce and eliminate that seat unavailable message. That's really important to us. And we'll be doing another wave of marketing. You'll start to see some, I think we're having postcards go out in the Lindamar community in November, reminding people about the service. We have a code for a free ride, I think it's try4free with the number four. Yeah, I encourage you all to download the app and take a ride. It's really, it's really easy. If you haven't tried it, it's great. And I do want to say, since I have your attention, we are launching an amazing project called Reimagine SamTrans that's really looking, taking a very deep dive into the fixed route network. It's long overdue, and we're doing our roadshow. That's why I was out at Lindamar today. We'll be out at Half Moon Bay tomorrow. But reimagine SamTrans, as we are developing our recommendations, we will be looking at places where we can implement this on-demand technology as a better way to provide coverage in areas where the fixed route is just inefficient or ineffective. So we're really excited about that opportunity, and I would be happy to come back and talk to you about that at a later date. So with that, I can answer any other questions?
Sue first.
I just have a question about the size of the vehicles and the corresponding need for personnel training and certification. I know in schools with school buses, we have certain levels and certifications that are required that end up costing more in terms of maintaining those certifications, in terms of those kinds of things. Is that, is there corresponding potential cost-saving with smaller vehicles within public transportation?
It's a great question. It's, I think there's some minor savings you can realize with a smaller vehicle, but the big expense for us is the operator, and, you know, that's, you know, 75% of our operating costs. But there are, there are some, I think, minor savings you can have with a smaller vehicle.
Thank you.
So I really appreciate the pilot, and I think it's a really great idea, but I'm wondering, when you go back to the board, you know, to do reimagine SamTrans, we might want to talk a little bit about equity because we have this whole community, and we have ridership on the other side of Pacifica, and students that go to school on the other side of Pacifica. So it would be really appreciated if there could be discussions around equity.
Most definitely. Thank you very much.
I think it's great. Technology upgrades, amazing. I see folks taking it all the time. I live right in that area, so I'm all right on the route, and I'm looking forward to seeing what has next. I think it's actually, would be ideal if it were to actually come up this, come up to manor and back down. We used to have a shuttle that did that, but there wasn't enough ridership, but I think you have enough ridership that you'd be able to get, get what you need to continue operating. Thanks.
I also think, that was a different kind of shuttle because it was for Devil Slide. This with an on-demand app, it would be a lot easier to take and know that you're going to have a rider here versus Devil Slide, you just kind of do a milk run, back and forth, back and forth. So, but I do agree, but you are going to have the same issue with Oceana, you know, with the kids all getting out on the minimum day. But I think if you have, if you know the population is going to be there and the ridership, it just seems like, you know, send another bus. So, you know, whatever. But it is nice to see, and I'm glad, the pilot works. I know my mother-in-law really liked Flex, but she hasn't tried this one yet, so.
Well, we got to get her out there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
With 63% calling in, are you seeing mainly seniors? I know you're seeing a lot of high school and a lot of seniors, how about in the middle?
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, it's 29% calling in, 63% thought it was better than Flex. I suspect it is mostly the seniors that are calling in. The youth, I think they're all, you know, connected on their phones, they're booking in group trips, they're, you know, they got it figured out. We do have commuters that use it, so, you know, folks that are in the middle between the youth and the seniors. We see people using this to transfer to mainline routes, which is great. We've also seen, in our survey, we asked, are you walking less than you were with Flex? And we did see a decrease in that, which we like to see. We haven't seen any ridership near Shelter Cove, is that the area? Make back up on my heat map here. Is there a little, oh, let's see, there's a little pointer right here, is this Shelter Cove right there? Little area. So that's one area that we think we might be able to push a little bit more marketing because we haven't, I don't think, taken any trips out there, but we have some room, room for improvement there.
Yeah, Pedro Point.
Pedro, Pedro Point? Okay.
Shelter Cove is a part of Pedro Point. A question, I get a lot of complaints because there's no weekend service, especially like, you know, going to church or to Spindrift especially, and just to go shopping. So is there any plans to have a pilot at some point in the weekend?
Well, not necessarily for on-demand, but one thing we're hearing from our riders through the reimagine effort is weekend service is so critical, also later evening service is so very important. So we're going to take that to heart as we do our alternatives development. We'll be coming back out in the spring with different route concepts to share with riders, so we know we've heard a lot from the coastside. We definitely have heard people wanting an express route back to San Francisco, I think it was the DX that used to run. And we're hearing a lot of that, and I think it's our, you know, our opportunity and obligation to really respond to the customer. And I intend to do that. So I don't have any firm plans right now, but we're hearing that from people, and this is a very customer-focused, data-driven study. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, is there anyone on council who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar, or anyone from the public?
I have comments on number 10 and some questions on number 12.
See all those cards first and... 14, yeah. Okay, nothing from the public, so would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the consent calendar, the consent agenda, except for items 10 and 12.
All second.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero. So item number 10?
I just want to have comments on 10 is that, we went to League of Cities, I went to one of the workshops, had a whole thing on SB2, the Planning Grants Program funds in the amount of $160,000. This was actually something quite interesting, that the state actually allocated money for every single city in the state. And as of the end of September, when, or was it the end of September or middle of October, whatever it was, they only had 90 applications. And I just want to commend staff that we actually must have had ours in because we got it approved, it's come into council, and the deadline is, I know, November 30th, if I'm correct, remember correctly. And I just wanted to thank Tina and her staff for the wherewithal of getting it done because there was a couple of cities that really were taking advantage of it and moving forward. So that was just a, kudos to staff. Number 12, I had...
Oh, Mary.
Well, I was going to say something during council communications, but yeah, thank you so much for getting that, and it's really awesome that you, that you did that.
And then item 12, in the job descriptions, you have the deputy director and the actual director wanting like seven and 10 years' worth of experience in engineering and supervising engineers, but under licenses, all they're required is to have a Class C driver's license. And I was curious what the thought was that they don't have a, I think it's a PE license, physical engineering or something, as to why this doesn't have engineering license if they're supervising engineering and you have seven to 10 years' experience, depending on which, and neither job description has the license requirement. I just wondered what the thought process was there.
Well, we typically, you know, we followed our past practices, and I don't know if that's been part of the requirements in the past. Typically candidates, in order to be competitive, have already accomplished that certi, or that certification. I think it just kind of goes without saying with these, with these particular candidates. I don't really have an answer for you.
Okay. Did Van have a license?
I believe so.
So I'm looking up the city engineer, but I believe the city engineer is required to be a registered engineer, so.
I looked at employment standards, which is page 2 of 207, and it says education and training.
Is this packet page 195?
Oh, my computer doesn't work the packet pages.
Oh, okay.
It's, if you go to the agenda, to the item on the agenda.
Yes.
207, it says experience, 10 years of professional experience related to public works administration operations related fields, an increasing amount of responsibilities, including three years of supervisory experience, and then graduation from an accredited college or university with a bachelor's in engineering, public or business administration, et cetera, et cetera. But then licenses must possess a valid California Class C driver's license and have a good record. And I just was curious as to...
So with the, with the deputy director of public works field services, we are requiring a valid license as a civil engineer issued by the state of California.
Did I miss, what page was that on?
That's on packet page 2, well, 207.
Okay.
And so given that we're moving the city engineer requirement from the director to the deputy director, that licenser, or license requirement... the deputy director, that licenser, or license requirement has also been shifted to the deputy director.
Okay, but which, that's deputy director of public works. Okay. But the boss, okay. All right. Okay, you guys have written the description. I'm assuming the attorneys blessed this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll have to go with that, but, okay. That was my only question, comment.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion? 10 and 12.
I'll make a motion to approve consent items number 10 and 12.
I'll second.
Please vote. Okay. And that passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
Okay. Now, we have oral communications. We have only four cards because we have so many in the other items. We have Marsha Murphy, Carolyn Harmio, John Keener, and Tiger.
Everybody, I just wanted to give you guys two big thumbs up for the great Pacifica United Against Hate campaign. I love it. I support it 100%. Pacifica, our city of peace. Thank you so very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I too want to applaud your decision to join the United Against Hate campaign. It publicly sends a message that Pacifica does not condone any type of hatred, including hate speech. Far from being harmless, divisive, deceptive speech can influence people in many ways and can even lead to violence. In these troubled times, it is imperative that leaders in all institutions and at all levels condemn derogatory name-calling and dehumanizing labels. This campaign can be seen as a challenge that does not end in a week. It can be a good first step to creating a truly compassionate city that values and respects all citizens, no exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you. John and then Tiger.
Good evening, council and staff. I'm John Keener of Lindemar, and specifically for this, a board member of the Pacifica Land Trust. And what I want to do is invite everyone, everyone here and all the millions watching on TV to our Escape to the Headlands hike on December 1st. We have two of them actually. They're leaving at 9:30 and 10 o'clock from right next to Ace Hardware. And we'll hike up the, close to the route of the coastal trail, that the coastal trail will eventually take, to the headlands and then hike in the headlands. And, you know, you'll see some of the most spectacular scenery anywhere on the coast, up there in the headlands. So that's the Pacifica Land Trust, Saturday, December 1st, 9:30 or 10 o'clock, two start times, near Ace Hardware. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. I am Tiger Jazztroll's Big Stick of Pacifica. I attended the remembrance of the Alonee people with the rest of you a couple of weeks ago. What I was struck by after coming to a full appreciation of the genocide of their people by the European settlers was that the speaker, who was a descendant of the lone survivor of the people of this land, still was committed to his people's ways. In general, learning from the land, taking care of the land, and treating all who are guests amongst this land we inhabit with care, with friendship, and with aid to the best of our ability as we help them wherever they are going. That very subtle shift of mentality that this is not our land to own, this is our land to take care of and protect as though a loved one, I think that shift is everything. We're so used to the illusion of ownership, we forget that even our own bodies are loners, let alone the resources we process and use along the way. It made me consider the philosophical implications of perhaps moving from owner's rights to the rights of the people to learn how to cultivate our relationship with this common space together. If, as the gentleman suggested, the land is here to teach us to take proper care of it, then may I be so moved, and may all of us be so moved. In other news, it looks very much like my union is about to go on strike. That would be the second or third biggest employer in Pacifica. It looks like we'll be striking in short order because, of course, my employer does not wish to pay us anything that vaguely resembles enough money that we can afford to live here. And as I'm going into this process, a part of my thoughts are, well, as I keep reading these charming posts online and the way they devolve to this point so often of, well, if you can't afford to live here, then leave, what occurs to me as I'm looking at the second or third largest employer in Pacifica not being paid enough to live here is, well, if we are leaving because we can't afford to live here because our employer won't pay us, how exactly far away should we have to move for the pleasure and privilege of serving whom we do? And without just, often it is a privilege and a pleasure, but it also is this odd position because I think that at least on some level, we still need the services that my people provide. And again, it begs this question, if I can't afford to be here, how far away should I have to move to serve you? Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one more card. Anita Reese.
Hello. Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to let you all know about our seasonal programs that we're doing right now. We have a Thanksgiving program where we provide gift cards and groceries for folks who need help during the holidays, during Thanksgiving specifically. The deadline was yesterday to sign up, but we will, of course, provide services to anybody who comes in to the best of our ability. So to date, we've enrolled 154 families and including over 400 Pacificans, children, adults, seniors, who get that help. Our goal is 200, so we do have room in the program. So please, if you know anybody who needs the help, please send them our way. The other is our Holiday Joy Gift Program. This is where we match families with children under the age of 18 with generous sponsors throughout the community, not just Pacifica too. We have some sponsors who are outside of the area but love our program so much that they help our families. So to date, we have enrolled 43 families with 85 children. Our goal is 150 kids, so we definitely have room. So again, if you know anybody who needs help over the holidays, please send them our way so we can sign them up for both Thanksgiving and the Holiday Joy Gift Program. We're also, I know it's only November, but we are gearing up for taxes in January. So we are looking for volunteers. And in 2020, we have some exciting news. We'll be bringing in the state's ebus. So we'll be able to take a bus off-site to a higher-density area so that we can provide tax services in their neighborhood. So we already have a site at St. Andrew and New Life Christian Church, so thank you to them for allowing us to use their parking lot to have our bus there. And that date is in March, it's a Saturday, I believe it's the second Saturday in March, and we'll be doing outreach in that community to let them know that they can just walk across the street potentially and get their taxes done. But we are looking for other sites. We want a site in Fairmont and in Manor, and those dates are in February and April. So we, of course, need more volunteers, but if you have a line on a site in Fairmont or Manor, please let us know. Our phone number is 650-738-7470, or you can email us at info@pacresourcecenter.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no more cards, we'll come back to council communications.
Okay, I'll go. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out and being civically involved. It's really, really important that you're here and really, really important that you continue to share information with all of us because that's how we can do the very best job that we can for you. So thank you for being here. I attended the Alonee Portola Heritage Day. I want to thank Director Perez and the Pacifica Historical Society and all the staff and volunteers for creating just a compassionate event where we're able to learn about our history in its true form. I really appreciated all of that. And the mural is beautiful, so thank you so much. It was, I was proud. I was proud to be there. So thank you so much for that. I also participated in Arbor Day. Tree City Pacifica and the Valleymar Tree Conservators put together a beautiful event where trees were planted all up and down Valleymar. And we had an opportunity to walk up the valley and learn about all the trees. And I grew up in Valleymar and I now live in Valleymar again, so it was really cool to be with a group of people and to be like, oh, that's the old firehouse and that's where my grandma lived. And when we went up and all the way around to the back of the valley, the man who was leading our group asked me to talk about the trees that were planted back there after my nephew was killed. So after my nephew Jonathan was killed, our family planted five redwood trees in the back of Valleymar. And the tree conservators have named it Beer Grove. So it was really awesome to be able to tell people that story and how it really helped our family heal at that time. And then to see the beautiful trees because they're doing so well and they're big and they're strong. So that's just really awesome and I appreciated that so very much. I'm going to be participating in the Home for All panel discussion this coming Thursday where we're going to be talking about our experiences with the Home for All program and the meetings that we had here in town and how important it was to do outreach through our community groups, so specifically through our Pacifica Collaborative. So I'm proud to represent Pacifica this coming Thursday. So thank you.
I'm going to echo some of what Mary said. The Alonee Portola celebration was amazing. Hats off to city staff, PBNR, and all those folks who were formerly employed by the city, previous mayors, Suda Gree, and John Keener for helping make all that happen. It was amazing. I took the afternoon hike up to the, up to the site and was there for the book reading by Nick Healy, who wrote a book on his traverse of the, I think it's 600 miles, that they hiked to the discovery site. And it was neat to meet him and his family. It was a pretty special moment. Except for the guy, except for the guy who wasn't physically fit enough, so we had to call a truck to get him down. But he got to the site, so. I was at the ribbon cutting for the Gene Fassler parking lot up at Cattle Hill. If you've never been there, I'm so surprised that so many posted pictures and people who I've known to be longtime residents of the city of Pacifica are asking where it is. So just keep going up Fassler, you'll hit a parking lot. It's there. It's beautiful. It's a great hike. It's, you know, a heart-pounding hike, so bring some water. But it's beautiful once you get to the top. And everyone did a beautiful job with that. Thanks to John Keener for helping make that happen as well. I attended the November 7th Veterans Day Patriot of the Year. I saw a lot of fellow Pacificans there, Alan Hale, who was here earlier. I saw some planning commissioners, I saw Suda Gree, some of our own staff who were former Marines, Christian Murdock, my husband, who's on the San Mateo County Veterans Commission, and also a captain in the US Navy. So hats off to all of those veterans. My grandfather was a survivor of the Bataan Cricket Death March. My father was in Vietnam as well. So thank you all for your service. Also attended Arbor Day, which was amazing because it was the second qualifier in our three-part qualifying series to become a Tree City USA. The first was the proclamation that mayor read at our previous meeting and also that day. It was, gave me chills to be there. And a lot of people came together to make it happen. And there were girls, there were scouts there, there were AmeriCorps volunteers there who looked like they had done that before. My two-year-old was very eager to take the most dangerous shovel and help as well. It was really cool. They did a great job. And if you get the opportunity to join next year, it'll be the second Saturday of every November moving forward because that's the best time to plant in Pacifica. And if you want to plant in front of your house, please reach out to the group, Tree City Pacifica. I also wanted to remind everyone about the United Against Hate Campaign. November 22nd, we're putting together an event that is a talk on why inclusive language matters. And also there will be a peace flag art event. We're going to start mingling at 5:30. The talk will be for 30 minutes, starting at 6:00. And there'll be an opportunity for Q and A after that and some more mingling. That will be at the Sanchez Art Center. And I want to say thank you to the Sanchez Art Center and Cindy Abbott for offering the space up for us. You'll see some publicity about it, but we're still getting it together, so pardon the delays. And then I just want to say thank you to Tiger for asking us that hard question. How far away do I have to move to serve you? That's a good question, Tiger. Thank you for asking it.
Mike?
I spent some time up in Sacramento at one of the conference, you know, we all serve on different adjunct committees in the county, and one of the ones I serve on is Lafco. And we had our annual conference up in Sacramento, and there was actually a couple of pretty neat projects discussed with the city manager that we should move forward. One has a possibility of really helping clean San Pedro Creek. And then there was another one that I think would involve Surt, which I thought would be very interesting if they could work for Pacifica. I also, everybody said everything about the Portola Day. I was there. And I was also back at the community center after that because I was a celebrity dealer for the Pacificans Care Event that night, and it was very well-attended. I don't know if they hit their fundraising goal, but they're the ones that support the Resource Center, also the Youth Service Bureau, and somebody else in town too. But anyhow, they had a very successful event and it was a speakeasy thing.
Sue?
I was at the Gene Fassler parking lot and it was really exciting for me to reconnect with a family that I hadn't seen in 20 years, probably, because our kids went to school together. And that was a helpful thing in leading up to the Alonee Portola Day because the family is Alonee. And I was able to meet all of their different relatives, brothers, sisters that were there. And that was a really special opportunity. So I'm very grateful to have been there for that. Had the great opportunity to attend the Alonee Portola Day at the community center and the Beautification Advisory Subcommittee, which is the mural committee, with the sponsorship of the Historical Society and the Rotary Club, were able to have that mural revealed, I guess. It wasn't unveiled, it was just completed and dedicated. That was very special. And then, and took the hike as well, was a little dubious about it, but I had some help from Tiger, so, you know, I made it up and back down. But I agree, Dirda, it was very heartwarming to me to see our ranger's, county ranger, I think it was, who came to retrieve a hiker who needed it. And it just reminded me of all the kinds of services that government provides and how important that is. I had the opportunity to attend the Beautification Advisory Committee and then quickly dash off and had the honor to represent Mary at the Pacifica Resource Center, the little second half of the Pacifica Resource Center board meeting because that occurs at the exact same time. But that was a really nice opportunity and I'm pleased to have a chance to see all those folks in a different environment. I'm not a celebrity player, but I was very excited to... I'm not a celebrity player, but I was very excited to support the—my husband and myself —to support the speakeasy night of Pacificans Care. And I think the mayor was there? There were a few, yes. It was a lot of fun and a really important, great cause. I think that's it.
Okay. So, of course, I attended the same things. The Gene Fassler parking lot, the money for that parking lot was sponsored by the county, and that's really important that we did get the money for the parking lot. The only—I attended the staff Halloween lunch, and I just want to tell you that sometimes our staff actually gets to have fun. So, they had a good time. They dressed in costumes. They had a pumpkin carving contest, and it was really quite enjoyable. The Alone Portola Heritage Day and the mural dedication that everybody else spoke about. I was also a celebrity dealer at the Pacificans Care speakeasy. And Arbor Day, I am definitely a tree person, so I really looked forward to seeing all those new trees getting planted. The Rockaway Tree Lighting, I want to remind everybody, is December 8th. It's a big deal. If you can park up on Roberts Road, we have cable cars running people into Rockaway because it's getting more and more crowded every year, and it's a great event. We have free things for kids and all kinds of fun. Just the cable car is fun. Here's something I haven't brought up before, but on Nextdoor and in several locations, people asked for a pathway to safety, a—maybe a road going from Valimar up to San Bruno, a road from Rockaway or through Park Pacifica, but something I would like us to look at in the future because of fire danger and because of the fact that some people—if the time when Valimar slid, that was a huge problem and no one could go north at all, and you only have one way out, so it is a dangerous situation, and with the fires, it is something that I would like the city to consider in the future. And that's it for me. And now, Staff Communications.
Thank you, Mayor Vinerlos, Council members, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I'm going to keep it brief tonight because we have quite a few numbers—items still to go on the agenda, but what I did want to talk about just briefly is the Kincaid Fire in Sonoma County because we had a significant number of personnel from North County Fire Authority that assisted in that effort, as well as from Pacifica Police Department that assisted in that effort. And as you recall, that was happening at the same time that the PG&E Public Safety Power Stoppages were happening in Pacifica. But, you know, this always happens with large fires around the state. Personnel from around the state, from fire departments and police departments, go and help, and if there were ever such an incident in Pacifica, others from around the state would come and help us. But North County Fire had up to 12 personnel on different shifts, working the Kincaid Fire, working long hours for the properties that they were assigned to protect. And Deputy Chief Pemimpik, who was the strike team leader-trainee at that fire, reported back the just excellent effort and professionalism with which they served in battling the Kincaid Fire. Similarly, for police, the role of police is often to help with the evacuations. It's to help with the road blockages and make sure that no one is wandering around and there's not looting happening, that kind of protection in areas that are evacuated. And the police department, over the course of different shifts, 12-hour-long shifts, sent seven personnel over the course of that fire. So, I just wanted to point that out for the public information. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Onto public hearings. Item number 14, introduction of an ordinance to adopt the 2019 edition of the California Building Standards Code and Fire Code and local amendments, including amendments that would exceed the minimum energy efficiency standards established by the state, REACH Codes.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council members. My name's Tina Waremeister. I'm the Planning Director, and I'm joined tonight, back in the back of the room, by Deputy Fire Chief Shane Lauderdale, CSG Consulting Building Official Doug Ryder, Assistant City Attorney Denise Bazano, and Management Analyst Joshua Montemeyer, all of which were instrumental in preparing this item tonight. Took a lot of work. So, I'm going to provide the staff report, but all of us are available if there's any technical questions tonight. So, as the mayor stated, the council will consider introduction of an ordinance to adopt the 2019 Building and Fire Code updates with local amendments, and will also consider adoption of REACH Codes, which will exceed the minimum energy efficiency standards established by the state in order to achieve greater greenhouse gas emission reductions. So, what I'm going to go over is to provide some background on the triannual update and the routine local amendments that we're proposing. I'll review some baseline efficiency information and strides that the state is taking in improving emissions reductions, go over the REACH Code, touch briefly on the public safety power shut-offs. I think that's an obvious question and something that happened while this staff report is actually being reviewed with the lead time for this—preparing the materials for this item tonight. And then we'll conclude with staff's recommendation. So, every three years, the state of California adopts updates to the building code. Every city and county is required to adopt the updated codes, building and fire codes, or the state standards are imposed by default. This year, notable changes to the state code include requiring solar panels on new single-family homes and commercial development, and something that has been asked about many times here in Pacifica, tiny home regulations. So, they still need to be on a foundation. It always seems to be asked if they can remain on wheels, but there is now standards in the code for very small homes that may have a loft for a sleeping area rather than a traditional bedroom that you can—you can fully stand up in. So, some of the things you might be seeing in magazines and—in TV—on TV. So, a city and county may make amendments to the California Building Code standards that are necessary because of local climatic, geologic, and topographical conditions. Amendments must meet or exceed the state requirements. The city of Pacifica has consistently, over several code cycles, adopted the same local amendments contained in the ordinance before you. Such local amendments are typical of the triannual update and are not changing from the existing 2016 code. So, one example that I could provide is we're in a fairly moist environment, and so we have a local amendment for electrical raceways above ground, which require additional insulation so that it's a safe installation of wiring. And so, maybe if you're in the desert, you might not require this local amendment to your code. So, much of the presentation tonight will focus on REACH Codes, so I thought I would start by providing some baseline information regarding the state's code requirements or baseline requirements. In 2008, the state set aggressive energy use and greenhouse gas reduction targets, and with each building cycle since, buildings are required to become incrementally more efficient. So, with implementation of the 2019 code, so new homes—if you include the solar photovoltaic—will use 53% less energy than a new home built under the 2016 code, and commercial buildings will use approximately 30% less. I'd also like to mention that the city of Pacifica already recognizes the benefits of greenhouse gas-free electricity and participates in Peninsula Clean Energy Program, which is, as you know, a community choice aggregator and the primary provider of clean energy in the county. And so, the stated goal is to provide 100% renewable electricity by 2025. So, there is some strides that we're already making. So, for REACH Codes, adopting them provides an opportunity for local agencies to achieve even more efficiency than the state baseline. The mechanism is local amendments to the energy section of the code, similar to the process for local amendments that I just discussed in other sections of the code. The REACH Codes must be cost-effective and must meet or exceed the standard Title 24 requirements. I wanted to recognize with—at this point—partners that have provided resources to help cities do the necessary research, to present REACH Codes to their city councils, and that's a joint effort of Peninsula Clean Energy, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and the Office of Sustainability. I think they may have some representatives here this evening as well. So, in July, the council received a presentation on REACH Codes and directed that an ordinance be prepared for consideration, providing that it would be able to address the concerns articulated by the council at that meeting. So, those were cost-effectiveness of construction operation, impact on accessory dwelling units, impact on additions and remodels of mixed—traditional mixed-fuel homes, and the effect of REACH Codes in the coastal zone, particularly related to the residential building guidelines. So, just to summarize the proposed REACH Codes, for new residential buildings, it would require electric fuel source for space heating, water heating, and clothes dryers. Natural gas can be used, if desired—it's not required—for cooking appliances and fireplaces. These appliances, such as a range, must also be pre-wired for future—for the future if the homeowner or new homeowner wants to go to an induction range, for example. And the reason why this was proposed is while the PCE was doing some research and outreach regarding REACH Codes, it seemed like the—kind of the pushback was kind of on the comfort items people are used to or prefer to cook on a gas range. Maybe they'd like to prefer—they prefer to keep a gas fireplace in their house, or they want to plum a gas barbecue, for example, to their backyard. So, there's just kind of some—I think some comfort items that this seemed to be the most, I guess, controversial, if you will, and I think more and more people are changing to electric water heating and heating. So, that's why we felt that with this first year at least of REACH Codes, that we were making this recommendation. For new non-residential buildings, electric fuel source would be required for all appliances, and they would be required to install a minimum amount of solar photovoltaic panels based on square footage. There would be certain exceptions for non-residential buildings, applicable to public emergency operations centers, and certain non-residential kitchens, basically if a restaurant needs to have some component of a gas fire for their cooking. Again, these all must be electrically kind of pre-wired. So, the proposed REACH Codes before you this evening result in additional admission reduction by requiring particular appliances, as I mentioned, to be electric. They are cost-effective. They are tearing off of adopted—the adopted state code, which has been accepted by the state as cost-efficient. They're clear and easy to understand, and they address council's previously-stated concerns. Those were regarding cost-effectiveness, impacts on addition and remodels. They're—not included, essentially. Impact on ADU construction, also not included, and there was no discernible impact for—on the Coastal Commission guidelines. So, lastly, as I mentioned, after the staff report was kind of due for review, we had our public safety power shut-offs, and so this may be a new normal for us to have these periodically. And so, as you might have expected, immediately, the building counter started to receive questions about installation of emergency generators. So, these are just a few pictures from the Internet, not in Pacifica. You can see on the top, those are emergency generators that are directly connected to natural gas. The lower left, you have somebody who used propane tanks to power up their generator. And then, the bigger picture on the lower right, I included because I think if it's only going to be a couple days, this might be the most cost-effective method that people may select, which is a portable generator. And it's kind of hard to see, but it's plugged into an outlet, which is plugged in to the rest of the electrical system for the house. So, this—all of these need an electrician and a permit. It's really dangerous if you try to do—it yourself, but this is something that we need to come back to you with some planning and potentially building regulations. They're noisy, you know, there's impacts that we need to study. So—but I do—I just wanted to mention it because it may be the new normal for our community. So, we don't believe the REACH Codes are likely to significantly increase the impact of power shut-offs. As many, but not all, gas appliances already require some form of electricity to run. So, your forced air heater, for example, needs electricity to run the fan. Other types of heaters will need electricity to the thermostat to run and to connect. Water heaters, depending on the type you have, on-demand water heating, for example, will have electric starters in them. But I think that there's a wide variety of products that are available in California, and so it just depends on what you might have in your home. So, with that, our recommendation is to introduce the ordinance updating the Building and Fire Code with local updates and to include the REACH Codes and to provide direction to staff to schedule the second reading on November 25th. An alternative action, I just wanted to mention that we definitely want to at least get the baseline code with local amendments updated to our recommendation. If there's still maybe some questions on REACH Codes or you don't want to adopt the REACH Codes, we can easily remove them, but at least introduce the baseline triannual update with local amendments at this meeting. So, with that, we are available for questions.
Questions?
I actually have a question.
I have a question that came just today, and so I'm sorry. I didn't send it to you ahead of time. And it came from an electrician, and I'm just going to quote him. He said, "How can you just throw wire into a wall for future appliances when they all require different-sized wiring?"
You don't.
So, for pre-wiring?
Pre-wiring?
Mm-hmm.
The question was, do you—I'm sorry.
Like, would you have to change all that wiring if there was a different-sized appliance that was going to be put into the house? I think that was his question.
Well, the size of the wire is based on the amperage of the device that you're planning on plugging into it, right?
Right.
So, with some advance warning, you would be wiring based on the amperage of your future appliance that you're thinking about using. So, your standard stove—I'm not familiar with induction. I haven't really seen them. I don't know what the amperage is. As an old-timer, I can tell you that stoves used to be 30 or 50 amps, so you would provide that. But we used to build them that way anyway, right? We used to build laundry rooms that had gas and electric. And we built kitchens with gas and electric. And so, based on that, those would be the—the wiring that would be required.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. We do have cards from the public, so we have John Keener, followed by Kirsten Andrew Schwend and Christine Cole Zog. Sorry if I butchered that.
Hello again, council and staff. I'm John Keener. This time in my capacity as Director Emeritus of Peninsula Clean Energy. This time in my capacity as Director Emeritus of Peninsula Clean Energy, and I would just like to express my support for inclusion of the reach codes before you. And I also want to thank especially the Planning Department and Deirdre Martin, our representative to the Peninsula Clean Energy Board, for promoting this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsten, followed by Christine, then Carlos Davidson.
Good evening, Kirsten Andrew Schwind. I'm the Senior Manager of Community Relations for Peninsula Clean Energy, and also a resident of Pacifica. I want to commend staff for your work on drafting this code. Again, it was found by our consultants to be cost-effective, and we think it's a very reasonable approach for this city, so commend you on that. Also want to mention, on the PSPS, I had electricity shut off at my house for two days during the last event. Peninsula Clean Energy has just announced two new initiatives to support the installation of solar-plus-battery storage backup, in the case of power outages, which is a lot cleaner and less noisy than the, you know, diesel propane generators. Those two initiatives are, one for critical facilities, I actually want to commend your public work staff for reaching out to us very quickly about that opportunity, and then also for businesses and residences. We have just put out a request for proposals with a couple of our sister agencies for installing battery, solar-plus-battery storage backup on businesses and residences as basically a bulk purchase to bring down the cost, and so that will become a more cost-effective option as we see those programs ramp, ramping up. And we're looking to actually install 10 megawatts, which is quite a lot of battery storage throughout San Mateo County, so it's going to be a big program, so that will be a, an easier and more affordable option for homeowners and business, businesses in the future.
Thank you. Carlos Davidson, and then Robert Whitehouse.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Christine Cole-Zog, and I'm the Executive Director at Sustainable San Mateo County. We are a respected longstanding nonprofit, whose vision is truly a sustainable future for everyone in San Mateo. So we applaud the City of Pacifica's continued effort on sustainability front, and hope that tonight, the council will take advantage of the opportunity and adopt the proposed reach code put forward by staff. So please also consider strengthening it even more by including all-electric and single-family and three-stories and less multifamily. As our leaders, you are well aware that critical design decisions like this one are important, not only for the short term, but really over the long run. Buildings that are going up today, though will stay with us for a long time, for decades. It's always faster, easier, and far less costly to set things right from the get-go, instead of having to come back afterwards and make the necessary adjustments. So tonight, you have the opportunity to send a signal loud and clear. And in light of the County of San Mateo's recent climate emergency declaration, the time to act is now. We at SSMC are pleased to announce that we are having a special reach awards category at our yearly awards ceremony next spring to celebrate our cities like Pacifica. So with that, my and my teenage daughters, thank you for your consideration and your continued commitment to a sustainable future for everyone here in this beautiful county, and I applaud your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos, and then Robert.
Thank you, City Council, for putting this on the agenda, and thank you, city staff, for all the excellent work that went into this, a lot, a lot of work. Tonight, council, you have an opportunity, maybe a rare opportunity, to do something really important on climate change. Reach codes will reduce admissions in Pacifica, but much more importantly, by acting tonight and approving reach codes, you'd be part of a whole group of cities around the Bay that are moving on this, including cities like San Mateo, other cities kind of like Pacifica, but a whole bunch of cities recently have, have voted on this issue, and it has a chance to move forward in a really important way, and we have a chance to be part of the leaders in making that happen. You know, sometimes an idea comes up, and people move on it, and it really gathers steam, and, and that's what's happening with this, so it, it's really important in that way. And the other thing I'd say is, it's really nice to be able to do something on climate change that is also good for people in all kinds of other ways. So this would reduce costs for homeowners, both in construction and in operation, and that was part of the cost-effectiveness requirement. There are also public health benefits of, of not having gas in, in the house, in terms of asthma and other health effects, and this fire safety advantages of not having the natural gas in a house. So there's a whole bunch of benefits in addition to the climate change benefits, so I urge you to move forward on it. If you're in the frame of mind of strengthening it, you could phase out the gas exemption in cooking, and also think about a timeline for phasing out the ADU exemption. It's really great to support ADUs, but, but maybe we should say in three years or something that, that exemption would be phased out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Robert?
And a mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Robert Whitehair. I, your neighbor is, I know it's close, in San Mateo. I'm here because whatever you do in Pacifica, and whatever we do in San Mateo, we affect each other. I encourage you to have the strong reach code as you possibly can, because it does a lot of things. It helps us in San Mateo, but also, I'd like you to think of me, who, I live in a 70-year-old house in San Mateo. It's leaky, and we're working on the insulation, we're working on the windows. As the electrical, as the stove goes out, or as the gas-water heater goes out, we're going to start replacing it with, with electric models. We have a 50-amp service already sitting in the kitchen for our electricity. We have a 30-amp service unused in the garage, which I'm going to use for the water heater, whether it's going to be the resistance type or the heat pump, I don't know yet, but what you do here will affect our air quality, we, ours affects yours, but also it creates a critical mass of people, of craft folks, of contractors, of suppliers and manufacturers, who can offer us cost-effective solutions. If the more people start selling all electric appliances around the peninsula, the better it will be for us. We don't have the wherewithal to change out everything all at once. We just put in solar panels, and we have a battery. We're going to have to stop there. We'd like to replace the water heater, we'd like to replace the dryer, and so on. But when the time comes, when they do go out, I want to make sure we have the craft people, the contractors, and the suppliers. So I urge you to adopt as strong a reach code as you possibly can. You might want to consider all-electric, but what you're doing now, I think, is very welcome, it helps us, and hopefully we can help you in the same way. Thank you for your time. I encourage you to adopt a very strong reach code.
Thank you. And having no other cards, we'll bring it back to council for consideration. Sue?
I asked a lot of questions about this when it first came forward, because I hadn't the first idea what a reach code was, and I do thank Councilmember Martin for providing a lot of information and links, and helped me educate myself a lot on what this is all about. I'm inclined to support it. I find the request about ADUs is problematic for me, because that is one of the most available, most immediately available forms of affordable housing, that we can actually inspire our residents to undertake. We have a grant, something that we're working with the county on for streamlining all of the, all of the permissions, and so I don't want to do anything that gets in the way of that. And I realize that three years seems like a long time, but in terms of our ability to produce any substantial affordable housing, it's really not that long. So I see ADUs being the answer for us in the, in the short term. So I'd like to just put that out there. I think I have another point, but I'll yield to my co-council members.
Deirdre.
When you said you think that ADUs is the answer, you're talking about the answer for affordable housing?
One of them, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree. I also think it's, it's a, it's a good thing for us to reach for being able to include, because it's, it's easier to do it now than later, if it's going to be required later. It's, it's more cost-effective to do it now and include them rather than later. So my proposal would be to just have staff come back with a date where they would be able to suggest something and have a phased-in by 2021, or end, you know, however we want to do it, but at least come back to council with something, and let's get that on the books. Otherwise, I think this is wonderful. I'm very excited that we're here, and I'm very excited to potentially, my next board meeting, be able to raise my hand and say, yep, we did it. It's just, those cities just keep getting ticked off in San Mateo County, and we celebrate each other, we celebrate the environment, and talking about the power shut-offs and generators, and everybody rushed out to get a propane, or gas, or electric, whatever, whatever you got. We did get emails from the, I forget what they're called, like propane People of America or something, saying, please don't ban propane. My first thought, you know, I had to do a little research on it, and we sort of live in the wilderness here, and we use propane, and so not going to die on that cross, and, but it brought up a lot of other things for me, and that was, we have a program in Pacifica called Map My Neighborhood, and I tried to get it instituted in my neighborhood, and one of the things that you would have talked about if you have a Map My Neighborhood program is who has a generator? And when I hosted my first meeting, I live on a pretty busy street, one, one person showed up, and I had invited about 20. So I encourage you to make friends with your neighbors. If you do have a generator, let them know that you have them, and, and, you know, regardless of how it's powered. But we did end up buying a battery-powered one that lasts for 12 hours, so it's charging now, and I'll keep you posted. But thanks for working with Peninsula Clean Energy on this. These are pretty good, they're strong. We got over 20 emails of support from both local and county representatives, and I want to say thank you also for that support, and Pacifica Climate Committee.
Mike?
I would fully support just moving forward as is, but maybe at a later date, we cover the topic of gas, of electrical-only, and ADUs. I think, just kind of do this to get it expedited, and at a later date, we can talk about amendments or whatever.
Mary?
I want to thank Councilmember Martin for working so hard on all this and for representing us at Peninsula Clean Energy. Thank you so much. However, I do agree with Councilmember Beckmeyer and Councilmember O'Neill about the ADUs and the need to streamline construction for those, so I would support the ordinance as it's written.
I like the exemption for gas cooking, because for years, everybody said, I want gas for cooking. It's so much easier to cook with gas, and especially for the ADUs, and I also think it can be phased in later. And considering the power outage situation, it does allow for people to be able to still cook if we have power outages, and also the fact that it's already going to have electric in, in the background, I think we're fine to go the way we are. The existing written ordinance. Mike?
I just had one question, is on the solar panels, I'm assuming that's your typical solar panel we all have now that connects to the PG&E grid?
Yes.
And not a small grid?
Right. So one thing to, for the maybe perhaps the layperson out there to understand, is that when solar panels get put on your house, you are connected to the grid, and so if the grid is shut off, you do not have electricity. You would need to invest in the actual battery backup that was mentioned by the PCE representative, and that is not required, but it is optional for anybody who'd like to do that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And I have one more thing, too. The thought of generators, you must get permits, they must be installed by licensed electricians, because if they're not, and a lineman goes out to fix a wire that's down, and yours is hooked up directly to the grid, you could kill someone. So it's really important to do it properly. Mike?
I was just going to make a motion, sounds like we're ready for more. Okay. Move to introduce by title only and waive the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. City Attorney, there's three bullets, can I just do them all at once, or individually?
You may do it all at once in one motion, but the actual title of the ordinance unfortunately needs to be read.
Okay, that's the thing, it's very, where is that on the page?
So it would be a motion to introduce by title only and waive the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica repealing and replacing Chapters One Building Code, Two Mechanical Code, Three Plumbing Code, Four Electrical Code, Five International Property Maintenance Code, Six Energy Code, Seven Green Building Code, 7.5 Residential Code, Eight Historical Buildings Code, 8.5 Existing Buildings Code, Nine Reference Standards of Title Eight of Pacifica Municipal Code to Adopt by Reference the 2019 California Building Standards, California Code of Regulation Title 24, Parts II, 2.5, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 12, and the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, and making certain amendments thereto, and repealing and replacing Article One California Fire Code of Chapter Three Fire Protection of Title Four of the Pacifica Municipal Code to Adopt the 2019 California Fire Code and making certain amendments thereto, and moving, that the final, sorry, finding that the adoption of the ordinance exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, and providing direction to staff to schedule the second reading of the ordinance on November 25, 2019.
So she did it so eloquently, I was so moved.
Do your second.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
Item 15 is Pacifica Libraries Project Citizen Outreach Program Update and Tracking Survey Results.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, the city has been working for many years towards construction of a modern, modern library facilities, and this was outlined in the staff report background. More recently, on May 28, the City Council received a report from the Library Advisory Committee and approved the Library Project Conceptual Design Report. At that meeting, the council also directed that additional citizen outreach be conducted to reach and inform as much of the community as possible regarding the need for new libraries. So with that direction, staff and consultants, Berg Davis, with advisement of the Library Advisory Committee, have developed a citizen outreach program. Tonight, we'll provide, I will provide an update on methods of outreach conducted, provide some analytical data or analytics on, on the effectiveness of the outreach. We'll hear from FM3 on the results of a likely voter tracking survey that was recently conducted in late October, and then we'll have some recommendations for continued outreach. So the outreach program consists of a new dedicated library project website, digital advertising, a mailer to Pacifica voters, social media postings, weekly inclusion in city newsletters, and tabling at various community events. So here's a slide, it's a little bit busy, but this shows the, the It's a little bit busy, um, but this shows the, uh, the website analytics. Most of our outreach is to drive people to our website, which is the, the, the main point of, um, information on the project. So you will see on the top graph, there's some, um, some spikes that kind of helps indicate the effectiveness of some of our outreach. So the, the first large spike that you see in mid-September correlates with the, um, community, um, postcard mailing that went out. And then, um, you will see a series of other spikes that are, is correlating with, um, some of our, uh, targeted social media, paid social media advertising. So so far, um, maybe like last week, I think, we've had about 2,500, um, visitors to our website or visits to our website. So most effective forms of outreach thus far have been the community mailer, um, social media, media advertising, which we think is probably going to overtake the effectiveness collectively of the, of the mailer soon. And then, uh, the paid Hearst advertising as well was very effective. So here's a slide of some outreach or some comments that we've received and I don't have my glasses, so I'm going to ask Joshua to read some of these to you.
A month while project for sure, just moved to Pacifica and was amazed at our worn out, worn out how the libraries are, amazed at how worn out the libraries are. For all of us who have kids, you know, the library is a great resource and somewhere to spend a lot of time. Our libraries are nowhere near the surrounding communities. Our family is very excited for this project and are definitely supporting the efforts. We know many others are well. That's a commenter from Valamar. And this individual from South Pacific Manor, so excited for the Sharp Park Library. I loved spending time at the library throughout my life and have found it difficult to bring my kids when it's only open four days a week. I do appreciate the later hours though, and we also need a better community space for Pacifica. When is this anticipated to finish?
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kurt, wherever you'd like.
Oh, okay. It's okay, I'll stand.
Kurt Bello from FM3 who will present, uh, the results of the recent, um, survey.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, uh, members of the council and staff and public here. Happy to go over our, our survey results. Quick note about our methodology, a survey we conducted, just wrapped it up pretty recently at the end of October here. Um, same methodology we used earlier this year when we did an additional survey where roughly half the respondents took the survey online, roughly the other half took the survey via telephone, um, and we reached out to individuals who are likely to vote in, uh, next November's election based upon their past voting history. Keep in mind roughly a 5% margin on sampling here when you're looking at those results. Um, and we've got a few different comparison points over the course of time. So, um, this survey, just as a one note compared to the survey we did earlier this year, was a more concise survey, just sort of doing a, a quick check on where things stood. So we didn't go as deep of a dive as, um, the prior research we conducted and mercifully this will be a shorter presentation consequently. So a few quick perceptions of the library itself, a little over half of the respondents here, and these are not all residents, these are adults who are registered to vote and likely to vote next November, which is the vast majority of registered voters. A little over half indicated they'd visited a library in the past year here in Pacifica, 53%. And even of those who said no, they haven't, about a quarter of them said someone else in their household has. So, uh, a relatively solid majority of households here have at least somebody who's visited a library, um, in the past year. The little italicized language up there is the specific question that we either asked or read or presented to them online. Instead of you recently, you know, seen, heard, or read anything about Pacifica's libraries? Almost two-thirds, 65% said yes, they have. Those who've heard a great deal is about one in five. That's that, uh, 19% there. That's probably, that's the number we look at, uh, the most. Broadly speaking, it's good to see that almost two-thirds have heard something, but those who can kind of recall anything they've heard would probably fall more into that, that 19% category. We looked at that two-thirds category, we wanted to see, well, who was a little more likely to at least said they've heard something? Um, it was those who not surprisingly have visited the library in the past year. Um, it also skewed older, um, those who are longer-term residents, um, or those who have , uh, kids or, uh, kids or, um, are sort of parent-aged kids. We did ask an open-ended question and we had a few of these in the course of the survey to say, well, if you, if you said, yeah, I heard something, even if it was a little bit, what have you seen, read, or heard? They gave us a bunch of comments, either typed them in, sent us on the phone. We tried our best to put them in categories. These were not categories we provided people, this is us trying to collate through the responses. Um, some, but people could give an open-ended question, a, a response that fits in multiple categories, so these numbers often add up to more than 100% because they could mention several different themes. Um, but you'll see that the, most of the most common things that respondents indicated they'd heard were something about a, a, a need to make improvements to the libraries, the fact that they're, they're needed retrofitting, uh, the fact that there may be new libraries being built or, or renovated otherwise. These are just the flavor of some of those comments, of things that they had heard, um, plans to build a new Sharp Park. They tried, they tried, now they're going to remodel that one, add, um, another ballot initiative, mostly word of mouth through other, uh, mothers' club and fellow parents. Um, mentions of the postcard itself, we'll get to that in a second as well. So, um, if they said they had heard something about the library, not only did we ask what they had heard, but we asked, well, where did you see or something or read something or otherwise get information from? Uh, and it was a pretty mixed, mixed bag here. The number one category, 27% was in a local newspaper. Um, then also we see social media, lots of words of mouth things here. Um, that mailer flyer, I think that included a kind of the postcard references, anything referenced to, I got something in the mail, we put that in there as well. Um, but you see a pretty, a broad range of sources of information, which I think mirrors, um, the presentation that Tina just went over a second ago. So we asked about, oh, sorry, it looks like there's some PowerPoint versioning control here. Um, so some of the words are a little bit overlapping there, but we did go through a variety of agree, disagree statements. Same ones, many of these are ones that we've done in the past to track attitudes about the library. So we presented these statements to respondents of the survey, asked them whether they agreed or disagreed with the statements. The shades of blue are shades of agreement, the dark blue being strongly agree. The shades of red are disagree with the statement, with the darker red being a strongly disagree statement. Uh, you will see here that essentially four out of five respondents to the survey said that the libraries play a critical role in educating children and teens and that Pacifica's residents need and deserve modern libraries. Um, and about, um, 73% also agreed that the libraries are old, outdated, and in need of repair. So pretty strong, solid majorities in lockstep there with those perceptions and very few people, with the dark red bars dismissing any of those statements out of hand. Uh, I'm going to go to the bottom one and come back to the fourth one in a second. Uh, the bottom item here is sort of the flip side of those, which is a little more of like, you know, we've got online o, options here, maybe libraries are increasingly unnecessary. 69% agreed, disagreed with that statement. So about seven out of 10, including half who strongly disagreed. Still about a quarter who, who agreed with that sentiment though. Now that fourth item down there is, is interesting because it's the most evenly divided of the responses. Um, the libraries are large enough, that Pacifica's libraries are large enough for a city of our size. 45% agree with that, 40% disagreed, um, with similar levels of intensity on either side. So that appears to be one very clear sort of dividing point amongst respondents to the survey and the electorate in general is how they feel about the size of the current libraries. Couple more slides following up on these. One, a number of these we've asked in the past, um, and you can see a little bit of tracking here. It's particularly pertinent to kind of look at from earlier this year. Um, you'll see in terms of the importance of libraries and the, and the fact that the city deserves and needs modern libraries, um, those numbers haven't really changed a whole lot. The fact that libraries are old, outdated, and out of repair, you know, down 4%, surveys' margin of error is 5%. Those are not really particularly large changes. The sentiments still hold pretty steady. Percentage who basically dismiss libraries and think they're increasingly becoming an outdated service that's holding about the same and around a little more than a quarter. Um, and the fact that roughly half or a little less feel like the library is large enough for the city right now, it's holding steady too. So generally, these sentiments are not all that different from, from February. This was interesting though, we also isolated responses to this question based upon those who've actually visited a library in the last year. Um, and you'll see there's some little more pronounced distinctions here. So if you have visited a library in last year, 92% of them feel like the libraries play a critical role educating, uh, kids and students and 91% of them also feel like the residents deserve modern libraries. So that's not surprising. You've been to the library, you feel pretty strongly about them. Um, though, but however, even those who haven't visited a library in last year, you still have really strong majorities, two-thirds or more who agree with those statements. Uh, include, uh, the distinctions are a little, you know, more muted when it comes to Pacifica's libraries are large enough for a city our size. There's not a huge difference there if you visit a library, you know, 41% who visited a library in the past think that's still, in last year, still think that's the case, but it's not that different from those who haven't visited a library. Where you see the bigger distinctions between these populations are the third item there, the fact that libraries are old, outdated, and in need of repair. Um, you see basically a 30-point distinction there. Now, 88% essentially, nine out of 10 library visitors agree with that statement, only 57% agree with that who've not visited a library. So that's a pretty clear distinction. And the last item here, um, those who are, think that in the future libraries will become less necessary, um, very few people who've visited a library in last year think that's the case, but pushing half, 45% of those who haven't, um, feel some way, shape, or form of that is, is the case. Oops. Um, so let's get to the actual potential, uh, library bond measure. Uh, here's the language we tested. It's not, uh, uh, that much different from what we looked at in February. Um, it's basically the $54 million bond, uh, which would repair and modernize Sanchez and replace the Sharp Park Library. So let's get to it. Um, as a reminder, we've gone through a few of these surveys with you in the past. We present the hypothetical 75 words that could appear on the ballot and then we ask respondents to indicate whether they would vote yes or no on that measure if the election were held today. If they say yes or no, we push them a little bit. Is that definitely yes or only probably yes? And for those whose initial reaction is be undecided, we ask them if they're leaning one way or another. So if you're undecided, you've been asked essentially twice. We try to push people off the fence a little bit here. And you'll see that support is at 65%. Uh, as a reminder, this is a two-thirds vote threshold measure, so we're a couple points shy of that within the survey's margin of error. As a couple crude rules of thumb, and these don't apply, there's other factors that take in consideration here, but you'd like your initial vote to be higher than the vote threshold. Um, and, and in an ideal world, uh, exceeding even the margin of error of the survey, and you'd like to see the definitely yeses getting to the four, get to about 40% of possible. You want to have more intensity on the yes side than the no side, which you do certainly have here, 34% definitely yes to only 13% definitely no. So the entrenched opposition is actually, in this survey at least, pretty modest. Looking back at where this has been over time, um, you'll see that in the survey we conducted earlier this year, the numbers were pretty similar, 64, 33. Um, if you saw the, the, the difference between the yes and no vote was, uh, 31% in February and now it's up to, um, 36% now, if you're trying to look for trends. Um, that could be a sign of a trend going in the right direction. We probably need a third data point. It also is right within the survey's margin of error, so I hesitate to, to be declarative about that. Um, and you'll see that it's better than where things were in June of 2016. Um, and obviously where the, the bond measure ended up in two, in November of 2016, um, it says a note that that survey in 2016 started off at 61, 62% and actually decreased when we explained the project to people. In the survey we did in February, support went up all the way to 70% when we explained it. We didn't go through that exercise in the shorter survey, um, so I think the basic dynamic is similar, although I think we're in a much, you know, we're in a stronger place than we were in 2016. Uh, a few notes about the demographics of those who indicated they'd vote yes versus no. Um, pretty consistent support amongst men and women, uh, when it comes to ages, um, voters under 40 were particularly supportive. Their levels of support were into the 70s. Um, even those in their 40s were, uh, relatively robust as well. A few visited the library in the past year, surprise, surprise, 74% of them indicated they'd vote yes versus those who have not, their support is at 55%. You just need to drive everyone to the library, um, before any election. Uh, in terms of partisan reactions here, Democrats more, more supportive, Republicans, uh, 50% of them said they'd vote no, 44% said yes, independents landing somewhere in the middle. Um, looking at it, the results by ethnicity, um, the, the higher levels of support were among your, your API voters here, um, the, although those distinctions, when you take in consideration the margin of error of these smaller subgroups are not that distinct. Um, and education levels made just only a little bit of a modest difference. Um, if you, this one's a little confusing, so I maybe will take this with a grain of salt here. If you have children, um, generally speaking, you are 60% yes. If you have school-aged children at home right now, 70, 69% of them said they vote yes. If you don't have children at all, you're at 74%. If you have an adult children, so, um, which correlates a little bit with the old, the ages that we saw on the slides a couple, slides ago, support goes down a little bit here. Um, the distinctions by, by income, uh, there's a little bit of volatility there, so I don't want to put too much of a emphasis on that, it's kind of not necessarily a distinct pattern. Um, but length of residency, there was a, 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 a little bit of something there where you have those residents who've been here for more than two decades have the lowest levels of support. We also saw somewhat lower levels of support from some of the oldest residents, um, and those who've got adult children, a lot of overlap in those, in those groups. Uh, and finally, if you've visited the library or not, there's a pretty big spread there, essentially a 20-point spread in support. So, um, we did ask another open-ended question here. If you have, if you're indicated you'd vote yes on the measure, tell us in your own words why. And we try to put them in these categories again. They're imperfect and the ads have far more than 100% because many people gave multiple rationales for voting yes. Um, but there's a lot of generic, like, libraries are good, important, I like them, we need them, sort of sentiment behind those yes voters. Some of them were a little more specific in saying they need repairs, they need to be modernized, about 24% of the yes voters indicated that, and other ones pointed towards either the senior services, community programs, the benefits for school-aged children. Here's a smattering of those types of comments, you know, we've secured the children's future, vital for community development, we need to have modern, modern libraries, uh, would increase the city's profile, um, and a couple of comments about the libraries being pathetic and, uh, kids go to Half Moon Bay or Foster City. We did the flip side too. For those who said no, um, I'd probably vote no on this measure, tell us why. Um, they tended to be a little more generic in nature. It costs too much, taxes are too high, um, those sort of things. I don't like bond financing. Um, a sma, a couple people said that bond doesn't go far enough and shouldn't, um, and only a few people said that libraries aren't needed or anything like that. They're generically more sort of anti-tax in, uh, orientation. So here's a smattering of those types of comments here. Comments that 54 million is a big number, um, the fact that they already pay a lot of taxes here, um, maybe that there's other priorities that the city should be focusing on rather than libraries. So, uh, like in the survey in February, we did do, uh, we didn't do the arguments in favor, arguments opposed in the survey, but we did do, let's explain this project again and see what happens after that explanation. Um, this is too much text to sit here and read over. Um, the net result is that support does go up, uh, a little bit in aggregate from 65 to 66. Uh, not dramatically, and the intensity does go up a little bit too, from 34% definitely yes to 38% definitely yes. When we did a similar exercise in February, support went up to, um, 70%. So we're probably with the explanation, before going through protocol arguments, what was happening here is probably, probably starting off a little below two-thirds. We explained the measure, we're probably right around two-thirds, a little bit above it, sort of hovering in that, in, in that area at this point in time. So in conclusion here, and this is very small text, but, uh, more than three in five, closing on two-thirds of, of likely November voters have heard something. in on two-thirds of likely November voters have heard something about the library, and they've heard a lot about the fact that it needs repairs. They've heard about it through a variety of different sources, and they've heard about some of the plans. And so I think that those messages were permeating out there amongst respondents here. That support level, we're sort of in the same range of just below two-thirds. There's ability to move above the two-thirds threshold, which, or reach the two-thirds threshold, which wasn't seen several years ago, but it's in that sort of range right now. And the communications the city has been engaging in have only sort of been going on it for a few months. And I think this is all pretty consistent with the survey research we've conducted in the past. Let's see what else I'd like to acknowledge here. I think that the importance of the libraries is still holding pretty consistent. You've got a really strong majority, a very strong majority frankly, who value the libraries and understand that they are old, need repair. I think there's a little bit of a split decision about the size of the library, are they sufficient for a community of your size? But there doesn't seem to be strong sentiment that libraries, you know, are a thing of the past or anything of that nature. There seems to be broad sentiment that libraries are important here in the city and that your community deserves a modern new libraries. So with that, I think that's the end of the presentation.
So I think there's just one more slide that just summarizes the recommendations, which were to continue with our outreach for several more months and to launch a parallel education program about the Pacifica Library Project in context with additional city priorities. I think some of the comments for those who may be against the project had to do with cost and conflicting priorities. So I think that we needed to do a little bit more education, or that's what's recommended by Burke Davis on that. Listening to the presentation again, I'm thinking that we may need to also do some outreach regarding why the size of the library is as big as what we're proposing. We noted that the place where folks said that they got the most information about the library was the newspaper, although that was probably our least-topped resource, I would think. However, we did do some op-eds, you know, so there was some information in the newspaper, but I think that if we have an opportunity to do some more with the Pacifica Tribune, we should do so. Continue to expand outreach to the community and to business groups, and then also continue to refine the social media advertising and other paid advertising options. So with that, I think the recommendation is to receive and file the report and to provide a distraction to continue on with the outreach program.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I just want to thank you for being here tonight, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate how you broke down the data. It's always very helpful for us to be able to see that and for the community to be able to see that, so thank you. I know you haven't been feeling good this week, so thank you for being here.
Yes, thanks. My coughing is much better than last Friday, so.
Any other questions? Thank you for the report. Thank you, staff.
Were there any public comments?
There are no public comments. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this? I have no cards. Seeing no hands. Oh, yes. Come forward and then please fill out a card. You can come up first. Thank you, Denise.
Hello, everyone. I just haven't, I haven't been keeping up with the design aspects of the library, and so I was wondering if that has been selected, or is this just a preliminary to get the site approval? And then the design aspects will be worked out at a later date.
I can catch up with her after. Or I can, so we, the council did approve a conceptual design for the library, and we do have a dedicated website, pacificalibraryproject.com.
I think I saw that design, and I was concerned about the large cement pillar that, well, just didn't have, didn't look welcoming to me. I mean, that was one angle. I mean, I saw that sketch. I just wanted to know if that was, if there were other design ideas that were being considered, or if this was now the final design.
So it is a final conceptual design report. It is not construction drawing, so there's always a possibility of refinement.
Okay.
Thank you.
How can we find, oh, just how can we find out more about what the materials are and what it really, what the, you know, where we can have more views of the --
Those details haven't been decided yet. These are, we're not at construction drawing standpoint where materials are being called out.
Can people from the community participate in this design now, or is it over with? Is it?
Yes, there will be additional opportunity to participate. At this point, we're trying to get the support for funding the project, and if that's successful, then we'll get into the nitty-gritty details of materials and other project design aspects.
Okay. I'm only saying this because I've passed some other designs.
Why don't, we don't normally go back and forth on these public comments, so you can talk to Tina after, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ellen.
I think.
Ellen. Hi, Ellen Ron, Rockaway Beach Avenue. I'm the LAC Library Advisory Committee representative from the Pacifica Library Foundation. That's a mouthful. Thank you, Tina. Thank you, everyone who's worked so hard on this, Kevin, Sarah, and thank you, council, for moving this project along. Just a couple comments to throw out there and to give everyone a fuller idea. Just for the folks who don't think libraries are important, San Francisco has recently redone all of their libraries, redone or rebuilt. Sematell County, our county library system, every other city in this county and in our system has either built or updated their libraries. We have not done either. The first bond measure, and the only bond measure that we've voted on so far, that a majority of the voters did say yes, it wasn't enough. And so the city listened to the folks who said, "We don't want to close Sanchez," and so came up with a plan to not close Sanchez to keep two libraries. But tied into that, of course, is the money went up because now we're talking about two libraries rather than one. So when folks say, "Whoa, it's so expensive," remember, it's two buildings, not one. And finally, off and on for the last seven or eight years, I've done storytime with other council members at both Sanchez, Sharp Park, and also in Millbrae. And it is a pain to do storytime at our library. I do it on Fridays in Sanchez, and it's really hard when you pack all those little kids in there and you're trying to hand out musical instruments or scarves, or you're trying to have your book be seen by all the children when they're all crammed in and can't move, and it's difficult. So I'm really looking forward to having a bigger library with dedicated space for things like storytimes. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll bring it back to council.
We have a vote to receive it.
Yeah.
That would be by motion to accept the report, to receive the update, and accept the report, receive the update, and direct staff to continue citizen outreach, as summarized in the report.
So moved.
I'll second.
Please vote. Thank you. And that passes five to zero, and since we've been here for a while, we need a five-minute break. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. That's what I was going to say. I was going to give you the --
Thanks, Karen.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. Yes.
Do you need that?
Yeah.
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 Can the council please come back? Counsel? Can the council please come back? We have about forty cards on this topic. I'd appreciate it if we could get going. Okay. We are done with our break. I don't know. And our next item, item number sixteen. If everybody could please... We have a lot of cards tonight. The update on motorhomes and unhoused in Pacifica. Chief?
Kevin.
Oh. We could wait a second for Kevin. Look out nice and quiet. Well, you want to begin? He can hear. Okay, we're waiting for the city manager. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. You can begin.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Dan Stidl. I'm your chief of police. And tonight, this item on the agenda, we're just going to give you a brief update on motorhomes and the unhoused situation in Pacifica. Giving you a little background as to how we got here tonight. If you recall, on February eleventh, the council held a study session and discussed motorhome parking and issues related to motorhome parking. City manager recommended an ordinance at that time prohibiting the parking of motorhomes on city streets between the hours of ten PM and six AM with a twenty-four hour loading and unloading permit exemption. There was also recommended a prohibition of parking of oversized vehicles within fifty feet of an intersection. At that time, council declined to move forward with an ordinance electing to discuss this complicated issue at the 2019-2020 goal-setting workshop, which was held on March ninth of 2019. The issues were discussed, and the issue was prioritized for staff to address in the 2019-2020 fiscal year. On April twenty-fifth, 2019, city council adopted prioritized projects listing, and I quote from the project, "Convene and participate in a Pacifica task force on homelessness and recreational vehicles and consider task force final recommendations related to city laws, policies, property, programs, operations, or funding." And this project was listed as priority project number two. Moving forward to May thirteenth of this year, city manager Woodhouse addressed the city council at a city council meeting with a process to convene a task force to address the issues of motorhomes and homelessness in Pacifica. City manager Woodhouse and the Pacifica Resource Center executive director Anita Reese selected members of the task force, which was named the Unhoused in Pacifica or Up Task Force. After the formation on August seventh of 2019, the first task force meeting took place. The task force continues to meet to this date. They will hold a public forum on November eleventh, 2019, at the... I'm sorry. I believe that's a typo. I believe it should be November twentieth at the Pacifica Community Center for the public to attend. And also, there is a presentation, an update to city council slated for December ninth, 2019, at a city council meeting. So taking a look at what we've had so far this year regarding complaints from the community, which I know has fueled this meeting tonight. For the period of January first through October thirty-first, there were seven hundred and seventy-seven complaints received regarding motorhomes. Most of these complaints were in regards to parking for extended periods of time. There were also complaints of human waste dumping and litter. Not included on the slide, there were also public safety concerns by individuals regarding lines of sight when multiple vehicle... Motorhomes were parked on city streets. Some of the complaints, as they come in, of the seven seventy-seven, at the time, it was difficult to tell what they were actually complaining about other than the recreational vehicles. They... A lot of these complaints come in on a recorded abandoned vehicle hotline. And people will make comments that their RVs parked out there, they're not moving, or the area is disarrayed with trash or whatnot. And the officers will go out at that time, once those calls are retrieved from the recording, and take a look to see what's going on. We've also noticed social media postings reflect a mix of frustration from the community regarding the parking of the motorhomes and also compassion for those that are residing in those vehicles. Since we last met and talked about this in February, the city of Berkeley has adopted an ordinance prohibiting motorhomes during certain hours. Also contained in that ordinance is a parking permit program for motorhomes. And most recently, last month, the city of Mountain View adopted ordinances prohibiting oversized vehicle parking on certain narrow streets and streets with or adjacent to Class Two bikeways. These ordinances were adopted focusing on certain health and safety concerns. Any Pacifica ordinance considered now or in the future should also focus on these concerns, given the recent Ninth Court of Appeals decision, the Martin versus Boise decision. So this evening, the city manager is asking for direction from council. One, does the council desire for staff to prepare and bring back, for consideration, ordinance amending the municipal code as recommended by the city manager on February eleventh of this year, or alternative amendments discussed and directed by the council? And if the answer to that question is yes, does the council desire to consider such an ordinance at the December ninth, 2019, city council meeting? Or a city council meeting sometime after January first of 2020, after the UP task force has presented their research to council in December?
And that's it. Okay. Other questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Stidl. I appreciate all of your information. Can you expand on the Berkeley ordinance? Like, what does the permit process look like? Do you have any other extra information about that?
What I know of the Berkeley ordinance, I don't have the complete ordinance in front of me, but there is a permit, RV permit system. They call it RV permit system. And they're committing to aid priority populations in search... They're currently in search for permanent housing. The permit process allows some vehicle dwellers in Berkeley up to three months with the possibility of an extension, and prioritizes several groups, including families with young children, Berkeley workers, students, and those who attend Berkeley schools, and people who have prior address in Berkeley over the past ten years. And again, that is overnight parking prohibition.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
So the permit allows the vehicle to park overnight?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
And no seventy-two hours? Just three months in the same spot? Or...
Well, I don't believe that's the case.
Okay.
It allows for the... There is a ban on parking during overnight hours. However, those with permits may continue to park their vehicles during the overnight hours.
Okay. Okay, no specifics.
But there must be restrictions on the streets where those permits are permitted, correct?
I imagine so. We don't have the complete information on the Berkeley ordinance.
Okay.
And has there been a recent count in our community? I guess I'm wondering if there's, like, valid, reliable data about the number of motorhomes that are actually in our city? I think there's been numbers that have been tossed out that aren't necessarily valid or reliable numbers, so I really am looking for some data about that. Is there any... Anything out there?
We haven't conducted any official counts lately, recently. I believe last year, when we discussed this, we had gone over several nights. We took some weekday nights and some weekend nights.
Right, right.
Something that we could certainly provide. But what the officers are seeing and reporting back is, since last year, the numbers are continuing to increase.
Okay. Thank you.
When you did the last count, what constituted a recreational vehicle? Was it like a van by itself? Or did it actually have to have... Was it a full RV? Or was it like a pickup truck with a house on the side? What was the criteria to determine it was a recreational vehicle or just a van? Obviously, I know it was a van.
We didn't want to spend too much time getting into breaking down the different type of vehicles. The direction was just something that's obviously what we would normally consider a motorhome, a recreational-type vehicle.
So that did not include vans?
It did not.
Okay.
Okay. We probably have forty-five cards. So limited to two minutes each person?
One minute? Is it?
I think two.
I think two. I'm not... One, I think, is too low.
I think people have prepared more for two minutes than for one. Although, we are going to be here very late. We're just used to that. So I think the majority of us said two minutes, so we'll go for two minutes. Thanks. And the first card is Brian Kamara, followed by Michelle Macatee, Macatee, and Jeff Cooper.
Mayor, members of the council. I am the Reverend Brian Kamara, pastor of St. Andrew Presbyterian Church, the oldest continuous worshiping community in Pacifica. I'm here in good faith. I don't have an agenda. I have no positions that I demand the council adopt. I want to work through the process and discover, in conversation with others, what is best for this community. So please hear me. I came here in good faith. But now, I'm starting to feel kind of lonely. I'm beginning to feel like I'm naive for assuming that other people might do the same. We made a task force. It wasn't the exact task force I wanted, but we all agreed to it. We had the opportunity for public comment on the task force, and no one complained about the number of meetings scheduled or the ratio of public to private sessions. I recognize many of the people here. We were here. We said nothing. But now, apparently, some of us are ready to throw the task force under the bus. We've run out of time for careful deliberation and discussion. We don't care about their recommendations or even honoring the time that they sacrificed to serve this city. Oh, no! We're talking about asking city staff to draw up new ordinances before the report has been written. What prompted us to do this thirty feet from the finish line? Why not wait just a couple more months? Responsible government takes time. It is okay to go slow. And you probably only get one chance to do this right. You already chose a path. You formed a task force. Just wait and listen for what they have to say. Then we can all debate in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, followed by Jeff Cooper and Leslie Bode.
Hello, my name is Michelle Macatee. I'm a citizen here of Pacifica. I'd like to thank the mayor for her brave interview in the Tribune this week. I support her opinion regarding the illegal parking of the RVs. I just came back from living with my mom in San Francisco for seven years while... Supporting her while she had Alzheimer's. And I think Pacifica is being naive, thinking that the people that come and live in the RVs are just going to be like your misplaced schoolteacher, or your single dad, or your person with medical disabilities that fell in hard times. There'll definitely be some of those. But there'll also be opportunists coming to scenic Pacifica to take advantage of the beautiful beach and the free rent. I talked to a few of those people this summer. One guy says he comes here during the summer because it gets too hot for him in Grass Valley. He has a home in Grass Valley. Another person says, oh, he comes here for seasonal work, but he lives at the beach on the van because he's just chilling until the crab season starts. The next thing that's going to happen is you're going to get people that have drug addictions, or they're mentally ill. And I have compassion for them. Pacifica just does not have the resources to support that population. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Cooper, Leslie Bode, Ellen Haig.
City chair council members, my name is Jeff Cooper. I've lived here for about twenty-one years. I think that the community in general has a choice. My choice is that I don't like RVs on the street. I don't like when they're parked on the street. I think they are a nuisance. I think they're an eyesore. I do have a couple neighbors that do park their RVs on their property. I'm fine with that. I don't think that, in my community, that's what I want. In fact, I know that's not what I want. I don't think there's a reason for a task force. Just take a vote. I think we have ordinances that need to be enforced. I think you should enforce them. I don't want the RVs on my street. I think that if you were to give some suggestions to you from the city council and maybe some exceptions, I did cherish those times when my grandparents came to visit, and they parked their RV in front of our house for three or four days. I think if a homeowner wanted to sponsor somebody in front of their home for three or four days, give them an exception, maybe two or three times a year that they could do that, pay a fee to the city for that thing, I think that would be acceptable. But besides that, I'm not interested in RVs on my street.
Thank you. Leslie, Ellen, and then Diana Seger.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Bodie. I'm a recent honors graduate from UC Santa Cruz with a major in psychology. I was born and raised here in Pacifica. And after a family financial crisis, I was homeless with my mother in an RV for three years. This all while I was a Terranova student. During that time, our legally parked RV was towed after a complaint from a resident. It was a school day, and we were informed that we had fifteen minutes to gather all our belongings, as much as we could grab, before it was taken. I went to Terranova that day in spite of my loss of home and shelter. I felt as if I couldn't speak or seek comfort from those around me. The stigma of being labeled homeless kept me from speaking, and I was afraid of being ridiculed. I sat in my classes that day in shock. I was an honors student. I was a student athlete for the Terranova softball team. Yet it felt like my community deemed me as nothing more than a nuisance. The tow company later charged my mother $5,000 for tow fees and for storage, thus ruining her credit because she could not afford to pay that outstanding bill. I'm one of many former homeless in Pacifica, and there are others like me throughout the community. If my mother and I had the support of, say, a safe parking program, then when I was at Terranova, maybe we wouldn't have lost our home. I believe in investing in all the members of our community. My mother and I were able to find some assistance through the Pacifica Resource Center, but the option of a safe parking program was not an option. Pacifica is overdue to help its homeless residents, and at least for a safe parking program lot would be a great start. My story is unusual, and I know that other homeless are not able to achieve what I did, per se. But with community support, others could experience success, transition out of homelessness, and give back to the community that they love. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana... Oh, sorry, Ellen Haig. Diana, and then Dan Alkema.
Good evening, city council, staff, and members of the community. I'm Ellen Haig, a longtime resident of Pacifica and also a leader with Faith in Action Bay Area. I'd like to read a letter that was submitted to the city council members, and I won't be able to get through all of it, so I'm hoping Marcia Murphy can follow me to finish the letter. Dear Pacifica City Council members, The Peninsula Solidarity Cohort is a group of over thirty-five religious leaders from a wide range of spiritual communities in San Mateo County. As faith leaders, we seek not only to build bridges between the diverse communities of our region, but also to inspire collective action for the common good. One of the issues we are working on is a compassionate and effective countywide response to the increasing numbers of people forced to live in their vehicles due to the lack of affordable housing in our region. But here's the good news. Safe parking programs are cropping up across our region in East Palo Alto, Mountain View, San Jose, Santa Cruz, Alameda, Oakland, Union City, Walnut Creek, and farther afield as well. These success stories have helped keep communities together, enabled children to stay in schools, and allowed families to keep their jobs. These programs demonstrate a pathway to permanent housing, reduce mobile home parking on the street, increase public safety through participant evaluation, and address trash and waste management through program services. Safe parking programs have been shown to benefit the entire community. And if Marcia can follow me?
Diana, is that okay, so she can finish the letter?
If that's okay.
Okay. Marcia Murphy.
The rest of the letter. These safe parking programs reflect our shared values as a community and as a county. The value that everyone deserves a safe place to live, the values of connection and compassion, the values of safety and security. Right now, our housing system isn't fair. In San Mateo County, homes cannot be rented or bought at reasonable prices, which creates serious problems for all kinds of communities, but especially those where people with lower and moderate incomes live. The situation is getting worse as rents and home prices steadily rise while incomes stagnate. This system is creating huge advantages for some people and real disadvantages for others. To ensure fairness across our county, we all need to work together to solve the collective challenge of high housing costs and the displacement that is happening to so many of our neighbors. It is no news that increasing numbers of people are forced to live in vehicles. Due to the public concerns about street parking for people living in oversized vehicles in particular, we have been talking with motorhome dwellers and want to counter mistaken beliefs that are fueling fear and opposition to overnight street parking in many cities in our county. Most of the people living in their vehicles work or go to school in our communities. Although they cannot afford housing, they live here. They are our neighbors. They belong here. And as members of our communities, we are all responsible for helping to keep them safe. Many of our towns and cities, including the coast, lack shelter and programs for safe parking. We oppose municipal bans on overnight parking when there are no viable alternatives for community members living in those vehicles. The deeper question is, what kind of region do we want to be? Let's choose compassion and get to work on longer-term, safer, and compassionate solutions. Why? Because we all belong, all of us.
Thank you. Diana, followed by Dan, and then Ruby Salazar.
Hi, I'm Diana Seger. I'm a Park, Pacifica resident for over thirty years. And I agree completely with Jeff Cooper and what he detailed in his two-minute talk, so I'm not going to repeat what he said or reiterate it in some other permutation. But I really appreciate Sue Vatterloss's interview in the Tribune. I hadn't bought the newspaper for over a year, and when I heard that there was her interview on the front page, I decided to purchase that Tribune. And I was very impressed with her leadership and her attempt to provide support for the taxpaying residents of our community. I do believe in working out positive solutions for all residents of our community. And so, one suggestion I'd like to make for those RVers who are here is to provide them with a legal dumping station or waste disposal station behind the pump station in Lindamar. You know, there's a roundabout area that's inconspicuous. It wouldn't have to be in the parking lot. And they can legally dispose of their black waste there for those who are traveling through or for those who are allowed to live here with a permitted overnight permit. So that is my recommendation to the council, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Dan, followed by Ruby, and then John Keener.
Hello, my name's Dan Alkema. I live in Pacifica, and I have noticed that the RV issue has been getting worse. And I just want to say I support the mayor's views on it. That's about it.
Thank you. Ruby, and then John.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruby Salazar, and I am a San Mateo County resident. I work with the Youth Leadership Institute, and I'm a member of the Working Families Alliance, Coastide Collaborative, and Pacifica Alliance, Coastide Collaborative, and Pacifica Collaborative. But today I am here to advocate for the council not to ban RV overnight parking. Rent is very expensive across the county, and as a student who is low-income and can barely afford to go to school, housing and living on my own would not be an option. I'm lucky enough to have parents who house me without rent, but this is not the case for many youth who may not be in the same situation, like foster youth and other students. By removing overnight parking, you are putting these youth at risk with higher chances of them being homeless and living out on the streets. To them, an RV is a home, and something the Council of Pacifica can do to ensure safety and regulations is to allow designated overnight parking, like many Walmart stores across California do. Let's not push our low-income communities and families out for a crisis that is affecting all of us. Housing is expensive, and removing RV parking is not a solution, but rather is displacing many people who work hard every day just to get by, and by allowing overnight parking, you are helping them get by another day. I'd like to ask the council to wait on the ban until the task force report and county survey reports are out to make an informed decision and working with groups like Safe Parking Programs to ensure everyone's safety. Thank you.
Thank you. John Keener, followed by Andrea Dionne, and Michael Malone.
Hi, again, John Keener from Lindemar. I would support a ban on overnight mobile home parking, but only if there's a site or sites established for safe parking. Several points about safe parking. It could be administered by the Pacifica Resource Center. People parking there would have to abide by their rules, i.e., for example, no drugs, and they would have to make progress toward becoming permanently housed. Of the mobile homes in Pacifica, probably a third or less would be willing to park there for various reasons, so the lots wouldn't have to be quite as large as we might think. There would be a waste dump and trash removal on-site, and all of this would be funded by the county, not by the city. So I think the real difficulty is in finding a safe parking site, which is no news to anybody, or a series of sites for rotational parking, and this is the real challenge for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea, I think I missed Diane Holmes, and then Michael Malone.
City Council Chief's title. My name is Andrea Dionne. I'm a lifelong resident of Pacifica and a homeowner. The last few years, the number of occupied RVs and other large vehicles on our streets has increased. Few of the issues this situation has created has added to our increasingly tight parking situation, has created blight in our city, and more importantly, has created a situation where many Pacificans do not feel safe walking down the street past these vehicles. The public roadways, parks, and parking lots are for the use of all Pacificans, not just those living in RVs or other vehicles. Really, who wants an occupied RV living near their street, their house, their child's school? This type of transitory lifestyle allows people to live in an area virtually anonymously. You do not know who is there, and they can pick up and leave at any time, unlike your neighbors who are living in an apartment or a house. It's not difficult to see this can present a danger. For example, what address does a registered sex offender use when they live in an RV? Large vehicles parked on the public street narrow the roadways, create a visual hazard for drivers and pedestrians. There have been witnessed incidents of illegal sewage dumping and trash dumping. This not only creates blight, but presents a health hazard. Somebody mentioned the city of East Palo Alto earlier. Two years ago, they were forced to spend over $600,000 to sanitize their streets and storm drains due to people in RVs illegally dumping sewage. The city has spent more than $200,000 a year just for that program, and they have another hundred, I believe it's $120,000 in grant funding, used to house 16 to 20 RVs, right? Could we not use that money more efficiently to house those people? Pacifica's not a wealthy city, and I can think of much better ways to spend our money. For example, maybe paying down our unfunded pension liability. Being concerned with safety, property values?
Thank you. Sorry, your time is up. We'll do this. Michael Malone and Diane Holmes, and then Gloria Stofan.
Good evening. So my concern is more about the way these decisions are being made. I'm hearing a lot of anecdotal and vague unsubstantiated accusations. I'm not hearing a lot of facts. In fact, we won't have any facts until UP has held their meetings and comes to the City Council to explain their findings. I haven't heard how many, exactly how many RVs are there, and how many of those are Pacifica residents, and how many are out-of-towners. I haven't heard, out of 777 complaints, how many people actually made the complaints. I mean, on Nextdoor, I see one person doing five, six, seven, eight complaints. So 770 complaints doesn't tell me enough. I'm just concerned about making these decisions. The other thing is I have a concern about the trustworthiness of some of the people sitting on the City Council. A while back, the San Mateo County District Attorney found that Sue Vatterlas and Michael Neal lied to their constituents about measuring a tax. They said, although that was not illegal, because they're politicians, they can lie all they want. I find it unethical, immoral, and it makes me not want to trust what you say. So when you come out and make statements about the numbers of homeless, I want to know where you get that information, okay? So I think, you know, in honesty, the three of you might want to recuse yourself of this vote since most, taking all this money from people out of town, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you. Diane Holmes, Gloria Stofan, and then Carolyn Harmio.
Good evening, Council. I'm Diane Holmes, and I am a member of the UP Task Force, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Task Force, excuse me, the Task Force tonight. The unhoused in Pacifica Task Force asks that in line with their decision on February 11th, 2019, the Pacifica City Council defers any further legislative action related to the homeless and vehiculally housed individuals until the Task Force completes its deliberations. We expect to bring our findings and recommendations for consideration in early 2020. We are also pleased to announce that our Task Force Public Forum will be taking place on Wednesday, November 20th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Community Center on Crespe. We are looking forward to hearing constructive suggestions from the community. And tonight, there were handouts, so please get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria, Carolyn, and Penny Nixon.
Good evening, City staff and council members. My name is Gloria Stofan, longtime Pacifican and member of Faith in Action Bay Area. I've looked around this room, and I see people here, individuals who do care about their community, who care about health and safety issues, who care about their environment and the people who live in them. Also, a council who is committed to taking time to serve their community, the community they care for. This caring, to me, is a common ground amongst all of us, particularly those of us who are here tonight. And I do remember several years back during the economy downturn, going to the Planning Commission during the housing crisis. I have a solution where the safe parking program will benefit the individual and the community as well. I urge the council not to pass a mobile home parking ban until a safe parking program is placed, and to let the Task Force report back to the council before any decisions are made. We are all here because we care, because we care about our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, Penny, and then Teri Eichelbarger.
My name is Carolyn Harmio. I'm a homeowner here in Pacifica, but tonight I've been asked to read a statement written by a person who lives in an RV here in Pacifica but did not feel comfortable coming. The council has recently made claims in regard to the unhoused residents of Pacifica as follows. On October 28th, the council claimed 200 RVs were in Pacifica. My count is 58. As a reference, on May 13th, the council claimed 100 RVs. On my own account, at that time, the numbers were 62, five of which were homeowners. The council claimed that YouTube videos promote the free living that Pacifica provides. Through a comprehensive list of keywords searched on YouTube, there is only one video of relevance and never claims it as a destination for free living. The council claimed that recology constantly talks of picking up bags of fecal matter. Recology was asked, and they've said there were only three verifiable claims. As a native Pacifica resident, I feel these claims need to be substantiated or rescinded before further action is taken. I believe that the city of Pacifica and its residents can do better than this and encourage both to help clarify these claims and be a part of the solution. In lieu of an emergency ban, I am suggesting an emergency resolution. I'm asking that the city, as an act of good faith, open the gates of the old sewage treatment plant located on Beach Boulevard as an emergency safe parking area while a solution is put in place. I believe that this is a perfect location for the following reasons. Little or no preparation would be needed.
Thank you. Your time's up. Penny Nixon, Teri Eichelbarger, Eileen Barcy.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Penny Nixon, and I'm the co-director of the Peninsula Solidarity Cohort, and we're the ones who sent the letter to the council, signed by 25 faith leaders from across the county. So this is a countywide issue, and every city and town is having to deal with it because it stems from a larger issue, our unfair housing situation. I've been thinking a lot tonight about the Kincaid fires and how many people were displaced and how many people had to flee, and a lot of people, that happened because of conditions. But no one blames people who had to leave their homes. No one blames people who are having to live with other places now. The reason people are living in motorhomes is because of the situation of housing in our county and in our region. And there are programs that are cropping up everywhere because it's a countywide issue and a regional issue, and so these programs are proving to be successful. And so I'm here tonight on behalf of the cohort to ask that Pacifica would encourage a safe parking program and to let the unhoused Pacifica Task Force do its work. I've been working some with them, and they're really amazing people who care deeply. Tonight, as I've been listening, "Pacifica stands united against hate." That's a wonderful statement. What is it that you stand for? Do you stand for belonging? Do you stand for helping people who are really part, have suffered from this unfair housing crisis? So I hope Pacifica stands for fairness for all and takes heed of the solutions that are available to all of us with political and moral will. Thank you.
Teri Eichelbarger, Eileen Barcy, Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
I'm Teri Eichelbarger. I'm the pastor of Mini Journeys MCC in San Mateo. I'm a member of the San Mateo County LGBT Commission, and I'm a resident of Pacifica. I live in Sharp Park. I've lived here for 19 years, and I have a home in Sharp Park. I want to urge the City Council to delay any action until after you've received the report of the Task Force. You established the process and the procedure and the expectation. They've done their work, and I would urge you to wait and hear what they have to say. There are a lot of people who are housed in RVs in Pacifica, who are residents, who have family here, who have kids going to school here. They are not all bad actors, but one thing that a permit process does is it allows better control to weed out bad actors and then assist people who need a leg up. Programs that put RVs in designated areas, and I would like, I would love it if we could give that a chance and at least hear the report about it. How many of us in the room are a paycheck or two away from losing our own housing? And if you were going to lose your housing, would you rather live in an RV or a tent on the street? In Pacifica, as I said, many of our RV are local. They have family, school connections. They are us. They are neighbors. Wouldn't you stay in town if you could, any way you could, to keep your kid in school at a time where you're experiencing that kind of unrest? For me, to turn a blind eye to that is unconscionable and in direct opposition to the idea of a healthy and compassionate community that we've lifted up even tonight. So again, I'd encourage you to delay action, any kind of action, at least until after you've heard the Task Force report and they can answer some of the questions I hope that you've proposed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Tiger and Jeffrey Cinder.
Honorable Mayor, Council, and Staff, I'm Eileen Barcy. I've been a resident of Pacifica for almost 50 years, and I'm aware that the Legal Aid Society has sent a letter to the City Council in opposition to a ban on overnight mobile home parking. In its conclusion, Legal Aid suggested a ban would expose Pacifica to potential litigation and liability, citing potential violations to California and U.S. constitutions, First Amendment protecting freedom of association, Eighth Amendment for prohibition of cruel and unusual punishment, the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection clause for due process, Title II of the American Disabilities Act. The letter advises to not hasten to a policy that is more harmful than it is ameliorative. I submit copies of this letter to the City staff, and I hope that the council can choose a course to assist our homeless and vehiculally unhoused, keep Pacifica from unnecessary litigation, and provide the leadership so necessary to advance solutions to a complex community need. Thank you.
Tiger, Jeffrey Cinder, and then Leonard Balbus.
I've heard it said that if at some point you're not making everyone at least a little uncomfortable, perhaps you're not doing your job the right way. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jazz Twirls Big Stick of Pacifica. On my ride here this evening down my street, I passed two RVs parked in front of houses, neither of which were occupied by folk. They're just the owner's RVs, one of which, the father of an old childhood friend of mine. When I walk to work every day, I pass by two RVs. No one's living in them. One of them belongs to a city employee. When I have family who come in, and it's a big family event, and one arm of my family brings an RV and my house is completely full, they stay in their RV. It would be nice if we have a permitting process so that RVs affiliated with houses are paying a cost, maybe their visitors coming in at the 48-hour, one week, two weeks, one month, one-year level, so that those who have clear ownership and a clear connection to a home have an ability to have their RV right outside their house, perhaps in the backyard with family staying, et cetera. As to the unhoused, on Nextdoor, it keeps getting to this crescendo point where at some point, inevitably screams at the other, "Well, if you want them here so badly, keep them at your house," at which point a light bulb clicked on in my head. Aha! We have plenty of room for a safe parking program, if folks are willing to put their money where their mouth is. It would be presumably through the Resource Center. It would be rotating to inhibit habitation problems. And if it were a successful model here, addressing the folks here with ties here, it could be implemented in a lot of other communities and municipalities, thereby perhaps offering a blueprint for how Bay Area-wide we get a component of this nailed down. I'm looking forward to fleshing this out a little bit more when I when I have more than a minute to do so at the next Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force meeting on the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey, followed by Leonard, and then Janet Breger.
Thank you. Jeffrey Cinder, 30-year resident of Pacifica. On possibly the most valuable piece of real estate in Pacifica, there are two very large, expensive-looking RVs that have taken it on their own to homestead in this area. Of course, I'm speaking about the north end parking lot on Rockaway Beach next to the hotel. We all know about it. They've made their presence known here for years just by their humongous size. This site represents one of the few no-fee spaces in Pacifica where both tourists and locals can park their vehicles just yards away from the ocean. This rather compact parking lot is heavily used and sometimes 100% full on Wednesdays when it's Farmer's Market Day. Vehicles circle endlessly around these gigantic RV monsters, searching for the rare open parking spaces. The parking lot spaces are needed, especially on Farmer's Market Wednesdays, in order that the shoppers can carry their groceries to their cars from the short walk from the Farmer's Market. Many of these shoppers are elderly. The Farmer's Market has been a great success for Pacifica, let's keep it that way. I propose to limit the parking on the north lot of the Rockaway Beach no more than five hours per day, and on Farmer's Market days, no more than three hours. Additionally, these RVs are running generators, causing noise pollution as well as air pollution. And what will we do, instead of these two gigantic ones, if four, or five, or six other large RVs decided, "Hey, I'm going to park here too"? I know they do it legally. They got all the tags. But they, there's a lack of insensitivity for them to do that. People speak about knocking on doors. I tried to talk to those guys. Hey, they scurry so quickly into the RV, it's unbelievable. I'm not an opposing guy. I'm an older guy. They run away. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Ballbis and then Janet Breger. Janet's gone. I'm assuming Leonard is also gone. So John Mendoza, Thursday Roberts, and Joel Silver. Yes. Come forward. Thank you.
Evening, council, Chief Stidle, and everybody present. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. John Mendoza, live in Lindemar. Been a resident of Pacifica for 55 years, and I am also a homeowner. I've kind of been looking at some of the media, Nextdoor, Facebook, Tribune, word of mouth. And I'm kind of getting a feeling that there's a little smear campaign going on here against our unsheltered neighbors. I've seen exaggerated numbers and embellished incidents. I feel that the unsheltered in our community are being vilified. They're victims of circumstances beyond their control. I have heard that most of the RV residents in our community are local folks that, through no fault of their own, lost their place to live. Tribune noted recently a deceased resident who was killed in an RV parking accident as a transient. She and her husband were hard-working, rent-paying members of our community who lost their place to live through no fault of their own. The RV was their only solution as a way to stay in Pacifica. Her death is a direct result of the situation we are currently dealing with. Her name was Karen St. Clair, and this is her picture. Let's put a name to the victim, please. Please remember her tragic death when those hard decisions regarding the status of pre-homeless people, homeless folks, and folks now residing in RVs. Please delay your final decision until the task force finishes and presents its report. And finally, any council members with the slightest perception of conflict of interest should recuse themselves, especially if they benefit from outside political contributions. Thank you.
Thursday Roberts, Joel Silver, and Edith.
Hi there. Thursday Roberts, Pacifica resident. An associate is under the weather tonight, and so I offered to read his statement. His name is Peter Loeb. There are efforts underway to develop a safe parking program in Pacifica. The Pacifica Resource Center has gathered information, and there is county funding available to help start a dumping station pilot program. The Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force has also gathered information about safe parking programs and will present it at a public forum next Wednesday, November 20th. Faith in Action and Pacifica Housing for All coordinated a conference of Pacifica clergy to mobilize around the safe parking concept. I believe some of those clergy will speak to you tonight. Other communities have implemented safe parking programs to provide an alternative for overnight RV parking on the street. Progress is being made in developing a safe parking program in Pacifica. There are some hurdles to get over, but it looks like there are ways to get over them. Please let the Pacifica Resource Center, Faith in Action, Pacifica Housing for All, and Pacifica clergy work on bringing about a safe parking program in Pacifica before considering an ordinance to ban overnight RV street parking. Please give the people working on a safe parking program a chance to provide an alternative to overnight RV street parking before banning it completely. Let's work together to address this concern. Peter Loeb.
Thank you. Joel Silver, Edith, and Suzanne Moore.
Hi, thank you. I'm a homeowner here on this street on Montecito. I moved from Oakland with the expectation that Pacifica would be a safer, cleaner environment for my three young children to grow up. And my experience has actually been disappointing in large part due to the RVs. I've seen sewage dumped, litter. I recently picked up a hypodermic needle near an RV. I, you know, can't directly attribute it to it, but I have observed all of, many of the experiences that others have posted about. And so I would ask the city to take action. I also wanted to note that regarding the legal concerns in Martin v. Boise, the city currently has an ordinance that bans habitation between nighttime hours. And those are actually, that's actually more prone to a vagueness challenge as well as a targeting of homelessness. So I would note that as many neighboring communities, Burlingame, San Mateo, East Palo Alto, San Francisco, Berkeley, all have neutral laws that just specify oversized vehicles, which is much easier for the police to enforce. Those sorts of ordinances are much less likely to face legal challenges. So I would say that those concerns are unfounded, and many of our neighboring communities are not facing lawsuits. So I would think that the city could do this effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Edith, Suzanne Moore, and Michael Malone. Is this a different Michael Malone? Okay.
Good evening, Suzanne Moore. San Mateo County is, has completed their RV survey. Those results are not out yet. But the reason the county did a survey of RVs is because there was 127% increase since 2017 in the number of vehiculally housed homeless, and they wanted to know why. The Resource Center did do a preliminary survey in February. And at that time, they were ascertaining that 50% of the people in Pacifica in RVs were over the age of 50. Half of them had been previously housed here in Pacifica, but had been priced out of their housing. And all of them were working. So we're talking about folks from our community who are working poor. Safe parking programs, ah, do work. They provide a pathway to stable housing. They reduce the number of RVs on the street through placements in permanent housing. They increase the safety for the community as a whole, as well as the homeless, because they are vetted programs, and they vet their participants. And they address the water and trash. This council can take two steps. It can lease a lot to the Pacifica Resource Center for safe parking. And they can arrange for waste disposal, mobile service, while a permanent plan is being developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Edmundster, Erin Macias, and Anita Reese. No Tom. Erin, Anita, and Julie Sterben.
Good evening, council staff, chief Stidle, residents. Homelessness is a difficult conversation. Pacifica has not risen to the calling of the county to meet the housing demands of our state. People are arriving in numbers for the same reason many of us came here 20, 30, 50 years ago. Providing resources is a double-sided coin. Every person has their story. And part of this is about compassion, but it's also about fiduciary duty to the residents, with added emphasis on the taxpayers, without whom the city would fail to operate. I wonder what Legal Aid would have to say about fiduciary duty. The shadow is cast on the side of the coin where residents discuss the arrival of more non-locals who are drawing on already exhausted city resources. This problem is greater than Pacifica. How can we even put a dent in our own population? In 2009, we had about 80 homeless. Since that time, how many of those 80 original homeless have been rehoused? How many affordable units have we built to meet the demand? Again, everyone has a story. Why has an RV dweller with family, with available housing, not been given the welcome mat? Allowing this is not compassion, it's enabling. How is someone who was paying $1,800 a month in rent and now has zero rent not been able to get their act together after two to three years of employment? Again, how successful are existing programs serving Pacifica homeless been in rehousing? What we're seeing is an increase of waste citywide because we are not transitioning people into stable housing. Our unhoused population has, what, exceeded 450 now? Because we lack parking enforcement, and we don't have the resources. We have seen an increase in drug needles, litter, bags of human feces picked up. We have handed out single-use plastic hygiene products that end up in landfill. Our creeks and protected waterways are being trashed. Raw sewage was dumped in the-
You're, sorry, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita Reese, Julie Sterben, Deej Gold.
So I want to first off, thank you all for taking on this difficult position, difficult issue of homelessness. And I urge you to stick to your plan and allow the Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force to do what you asked them to do. Develop recommendations for the city to consider. I hear the majority of complaints are that you aren't doing anything about motorhomes. You are. A community task force was created to help the city consider options before unilaterally banning overnight parking of motorhomes, kicking the issue, literally, down the road and out of Pacifica. PRC has ideas on solutions. I've shared those solutions or those ideas at the July 2018 homeless study session, at the February 11th council meeting. And they were all based on the 2016 county feasibility study on rotating shelters on the coast. Any potential solution requires community support. And with community support, we can attract funding and service providers to implement. How you as a council respond to this issue will be your legacy. Follow through on the commitment you already made to Pacificans, both housed and unhoused, and give the intelligent men and women on the UP Task Force the time to share their potential solutions. Then we, the city, Pacifica Resource Center, and the community can determine what is possible. In the meantime, PRC will continue our work to help our unhoused neighbors become housed and try to address community concerns, including piloting a mobile dump site for motorhomes and housing-centered case management focusing on addressing barriers to become, for folks to become housed. As part of this work, we conducted 22 motorhome surveys in Pacifica on behalf of the county. Really quickly, since I only have four seconds. 59% have only lived in Pacifica in their motorhome.
Thank you. Julie Sterben, Deej Gold, and Kathy Maresco. Julie. And no Julie or Deej Gold. Kathy Maresco, then Nancy Stotts, and Glenn Lipp.
Hi, my name is Kathy Maresco, and I'm a Pacifica resident. I know tonight you're talking about the parking ordinances. And some argue that it's cruel and inhumane to ban people from camping and/or living in vehicles on their Pacifica streets, and that the city should be more compassionate. Well, I think that allowing people to live on the streets is inhumane, unsafe, and unhealthy. Living on the streets, the people are isolated. They have very little protection as inconsistency. Where are they living? How are they being protected? Social services, if they don't go and get the services, there's no services coming to them to help identify their financial, medical, and mental health needs. So I feel that they're, allowing them to live on the street is abandoning them. There have been many incidents of the waste. Everybody's talked about it tonight. We know the diseases that can come out of that, and it's not fair to expose the RV dwellers or the rest of the community to that type of exposure. So if the parking ordinance is enforced, I would hope that our community would step up with a relocation of these people. I've been hearing for three or four years that the churches are going to allow people to park in their lots overnight, but I don't think that's happening. And again, I hope that our community would step up and not just rely on government to do something about it. We all need to do something to help people. And again, I just don't think that allowing people to live on the street is compassionate. I think it's lazy. Thank you.
Nancy Stotts, Glenn Lipp, and then Connie Menefee.
Council, this big issue. My name is Nancy Stotts, and I'm a 40-plus-year resident of Pacifica. Homelessness is a problem, and it's a problem that's going to increase as technology increases and jobs are reduced. We have laws on the books in Pacifica. I urge you to enforce them. Should the task force bring forth recommendations that are adoptable, I encourage you to do that. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Glenn Lipp. And then Connie Menefee.
Thank you, folks. I want to thank you for your time in addressing this. And I just had a couple thoughts. I didn't know about this meeting until yesterday, so I wasn't able to come up with too much. But I first want to say that I love Pacifica. I have for the 40-plus years that I've been coming here. My aunt and uncle owned a house for over 20 years. And it's always been a pleasure to be here, and I really appreciate it. But I don't just love it for the ocean and the climate. I love it for the culture. I love the live and let-live attitude, the casual lifestyle and pace. And I think they're a hallmark of this city. Same reasons that many of us who find ourselves unable to afford ever-increasing rents and property values end up being in our situations. I think that there can be a resolution to this. Safe parking is absolutely the way to go, at least immediately. Because that's why most of us are here. We live, we are stuck living in our vehicles. And the thing that we want is the same as all of you. We want a safe place to rest our heads. We want to know that our property is going to be safe. If there are crimes, and I also want to commend the police department, they have been completely professional and even-handed in dealing with this issue. You know, if there is increasing crimes, if there is increase in violations, then that's one thing. But if it's just a matter of this being an eyesore or uncomfortable for someone to walk by where he doesn't know someone is inside or not, then that's another issue. Again, I want to thank you guys for your time, and I hope that this comes out positively for everybody.
Thank you. Connie Menefee.
I began working for the city and county of San Francisco-
I began working for the city and county of San Francisco at City Hall in 1987. The homeless encampment at Civic Center Plaza, later dubbed Camp Agnos to disparage former Mayor Art Agnos, was in its early stages. As the homeless numbers exploded, city officials were ultimately forced to fill in the long fountain pool in front of City Hall because it had become a public bathroom. Mayor Agnos lost his bid for reelection largely due to his paralysis over the homeless crisis. Five San Francisco mayors have grappled with the intractable homelessness problem for over 30 years. London Breed has now inherited the issue and must come up with new solutions to house the unhoused and deal with the unprecedented proliferation of RV dwellers. If a city with a massive will and resources of San Francisco can't resolve this issue, how can revenue-poor and ill-equipped Pacifica be expected to tackle it? This is a regional problem that demands regional solutions with resources from multiple jurisdictions. The city of Pacifica cannot fund the vast public health needs associated with the burgeoning number of ramshackle vehicles, many inoperable, creating blight and dumping wastewater into our storm drains. Do we really want our hard-working garbage collectors picking up bags of human feces? If Pacifica sanctions this activity, we become a magnet and assume all liability for a host of problems. I stand with the mayor, and I urge council to move forward with this ordinance and not delay until 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of the cards. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to council. And unusually, I'm going to speak first because I brought this up. And I would-
10:30.
Oh, okay. Before I start, it's 10:30, and we probably need to extend our time because we can only go to 11:00. Without extending, what does someone like to propose a time?
11:30?
11:30?
11:30.
Everyone agrees? Okay, everyone agrees to 11:30. Now I'll go on. Do we have to vote?
Make a motion.
Okay. There was a motion and a second, so please-
Move we extend the time to 11:30?
I'll second.
Please vote. Thank you. That passes five to nothing. So first off, I want to thank everyone for being here. Everyone does care about Pacifica. That's why we're all here. I want to thank the task force for their hard work. I do not want to stop the task force. I think the task force can continue. This ordinance is not written. We do have ordinances on the books, which we're not using at the moment. But an ordinance takes time. The task force is taking time. While we're working on an ordinance, the task force can come up with decisions. I've seen no locations, no plans. We have no city land and no city funds. This is clearly a statewide and county issue, not just the city. And we are being more and more burdened with it as other cities negate their issues by not allowing parking of RVs. So I see more and more, I don't know the number because the number hasn't been done, but I see more and more. I hear every day, these are health and safety issues. I probably get five to 10 emails every single day from people saying, "Please outlaw the RVs parking on our streets." They are dumping in the storm drains. The storm drains go into the ocean. We have people picking up garbage. And a lot of good that does when feces is flowing directly into our ocean and causing other additional health problems. There's garbage dumped. People have been threatened. Children need to walk by the RVs. They, no one knows who's living in the RVs. They could be safe, they could be unsafe. They could be drug addicts, they could not. The letter that we got from legal aid said that almost everyone who lives in RVs is mentally ill. I don't believe that either. But there are probably some people who are mentally ill. It's unsafe for cars. It's unsafe for bicycles and people walking. I would always think that the Christian way is to help those in need, but I haven't heard that the churches are willing to take on this issue. I think this is a big church problem, not just a city problem. And I thank you all for coming forward. There on next door, there were over 600 posts regarding this issue, mostly about people who were tired of dealing with the issue. And that's why I brought it forward. And I think we should go forward to initiating this ordinance because it's going to take time. Thank you. And next?
Okay, I'll go. Okay, let me begin by talking about my own experience on the task force. So I was appointed to participate in the Rent Advisory Task Force a few years ago. And group of people got together. We were actually getting along and talking to each other and like getting something, some kind of relationship going on so that we could get something done. And everything was stopped. It was just, we're not meeting anymore. It was kind of like yanked out from under us. And I personally felt completely disrespected by that. I think that even though maybe we weren't, you know, coming up with any big solutions at that moment, that if we had had time and we were respected for actually doing the work, that maybe we could have come up with something, just anything. It takes a really long time to form a task force. Our Rent Advisory Task Force had the guidance of the city. We had data from the city. We had facilitation by the city. We had coffee. And we have created it, we said, "Okay, okay, the UP Task Force, we're gonna put you guys out there, and you're gonna do this all on your own." We gave them maybe one or two meetings of facilitation and expected them to come together and create, well, what I'm hoping for is data and, you know, things from other communities that are working. But we expected them to do a bunch of work in a little bit of a time, in only like four months' time. This kind of work takes an extremely long time. And we have people who have come together, who have stepped up to the plate. They had to come, they had to interview, they spent their time. They're coming together under scrutiny. People are pulling fire alarms on them. I think it would be completely disrespectful to do anything until this task force has an opportunity to come before us with some solutions. Now, I have heard some really great things here tonight from everyone, because obviously, we all do care about our community, and that's what's so beautiful about Pacifica. So I've heard ideas of people that are coming up here tonight. I've heard about a mobile dump station. I've heard about permitting processes. I've heard about home hosting. Maybe we can get people to host in their homes. You know, we talk a lot here about property values and property rights. And so maybe our property owners can have the right to host an RV in their driveway or in their backyard. I think there can be very innovative solutions if we start thinking out of the box about this situation. We are not in a period of time where we can just think in our old ways. We really have to step up here. And we have to come together as a community. And so I love the ideas that have come before us. I honor the task force and all the people that are on it. I look forward to everything that you bring to us. And I think that that's all I have to say for right now.
I'll go. So I received a lot of feedback from a meeting that happened two weeks ago because I didn't speak enough, because I didn't share enough of what my thinking was about why I was gonna vote the way I was gonna vote, or what my, what was going through my head. So I took that to heart, and I decided that as uncomfortable a subject as this is, I would go ahead and share my perspectives. This is an incredibly difficult situation. This is one of those nobody's gonna be happy situations because nobody's gonna get 100% of what they want. So I don't even think Mary's gonna be happy with the way things go, and I hate that. But what I am hearing is that we have a fiduciary responsibility. We have a government enforcement responsibility to the taxpayers of Pacifica, and I don't know that we are really addressing that. I hear us addressing the needs of people that we're not sure who they are, and the people we know who they are, and we know that they pay their property taxes every year, and that is what keeps this city afloat. We're not listening to them. So that's difficult for me. That makes this difficult. I'm not saying we're not listening to all of them. We're not, the feedback we've received has been very clear. In terms of numbers, emails that have been coming through, it's clear that people feel that our laws are not being enforced. So what are our laws? We have a parking ordinance. It was brought forward to us in February. The city manager made recommendations. We deferred. And what I'm hearing is a false kind of dichotomy between the idea of looking at parking ordinance and allowing the UP Task Force to do any work. It's not an either-or proposition. This is an incredibly difficult and complex situation that takes the best thinking of everyone. So I don't understand exactly why one negates the other. I think that we've got some issues to concern ourselves with in terms of health and safety. Our environment is something that is paramount in almost everyone's mind in Pacifica. We have a beach coalition. We do cleanups. We're focusing on tree planting. We have our climate action. We're focused on reach codes so that we can address our greenhouse gas emissions. And yet, right in front of us, we have extreme health and safety issues affecting our environment. So we have a wastewater treatment system. We've spent millions and millions of dollars working on improving due to sanitary sewer overflows. We have a significant plan that is nearly complete to address that. And we have unsanitary dumping overflows that we are powerless to stop because we're not talking about people's homes that are connected to the sewer. We're talking about a vehicle that may or may not have a toilet. I have heard that there have been bottles and jars and bags of human waste left for recology to pick up. That is unacceptable. So in terms of health and safety, oh, another point that I wanted to make is we've spent a lot of time and effort, and we're very excited about a bike and ped program with our Parks, Beaches, and Recreation. My husband is a bike rider, and the safety issues inherent in having large, oversized vehicles blocking the areas where the bikes need to go is significant. To be able to get around the vehicle enough to move forward on the street, you are in the middle of the lane of traffic. So I think that I probably said enough at this point to let you know kind of where my thinking is. I'm looking forward to all of the ideas that'll be coming forward from the UP Task Force. I don't, I am anxious for that report, and I'm concerned when I keep hearing it become later and later. My expectation was we were gonna hear from them in November. Now I'm hearing early 2020. So I'm not sure what to do about that continuing issue. And I do, I'm sensitive to Councilmember Beer's observations that this does take time. But there's no reason to stop doing that work and not look at parking ordinances. That is an important thing that we need to do in this community.
I have a couple questions for staff. So Chief, many speakers spoke about enforced existing laws. What would enforcement of the existing laws be if we were to do that?
The existing law that I assume that folks are talking about this evening is our prohibition in our municipal code against, you know, human habitation of the vehicle overnight. That wouldn't just be a motorhome, that would be any vehicle. As I've brought up at previous council meetings regarding that issue, years ago, when we get a complaint about somebody, you know, sleeping or habitating in their vehicle, camping in their vehicle overnight, it was relatively easy to, you know, knock on a door, knock on a window, find out what was going on, and determine what course of action, if any, that we needed to take. With what we're seeing, increasing number of motorhomes parked in our community, it's nearly impossible to enforce that ordinance, for the primary reason that once the population started exploding these motorhomes, and before we really began to address it as a city at this level, we would get complaints, we would go out, and we'd knock on the doors in the middle of the night. But very quickly, the population learned that if the police knock on your door and you don't answer your door in the middle of the night, nothing's going to happen. And quite frankly, that's how it should be. We're talking about an infraction. The police aren't going to pull someone's door off or pull somebody out of their vehicle in the middle of the night over an infraction. So given the number, right now as it stands, the number of motorhomes that exist in Pacifica, as well as the fact that more often than not, they're not going to come to their doors in the middle of the night when the hours of the violation are occurring, during the hours when the violations are occurring, and just merely at this point, by the number of officers that I have on duty in the middle of the night, which is usually one sergeant and three officers, it's nearly impossible to enforce.
Now, what about the move a car within 72 hours law?
That one, that one is enforced. It's generally on a complaint basis. We receive a complaint that a vehicle, any vehicle, not just a motorhome, but in this case, as we're talking about tonight, motorhomes, has not moved. With, you know, in the last three days, we will go out and mark the vehicle. We will come back at a, in a minimum of 72 hours. It's not always right at 72 hours. It may be, depending on staffing or what the workload is, it could be three, four, or five days. We'll go out, check the vehicle. If it appears the vehicle's moved, we could check odometer markings. If it appears the vehicle's moved and come back right in that location, there is no violation. If we cannot prove either way whether the vehicle's moved or not, if we're not sure, we can mark it again. We could try to make contact with the occupant to see what's going on. But more often than not, when we mark the vehicles, we find that they are complying, they are moving, whether it's just the other side of the street or down the road a little bit. If we mark them, they will usually move. And we are actively responding to every single one of those complaints.
So you actually physically look in the window to read the odometer, if you can read it? Because I know my car, it shuts off when-
Yeah, if, yeah, that's the problem we have with most vehicles these days. Some of these vehicles are older, and you can't see them. But it depends. A lot of these vehicles that we find have window coverings, obviously to keep the light out, which prevents us from, you know, doing that. If there's any doubt whether- If there's any doubt whether the vehicle's moved or not, we will remark it, or try to contact the person, we won't take action. We have to know for certain that vehicle hasn't moved before we're able to take any action.
Do you have any sort of statistics as to find out where the vehicle is registered? Because every vehicle has to have a tag and be registered.
That's correct.
Do you have any, and I know you can't just go up and randomly do it, but do you have any sort of statistics of, of when you've looked at vehicles to see what the, where the county of registration is or city of registration?
We don't have that compiled. Do we have, do we have the ability to obtain that data lawfully? Yes, we do, in that if we mark a vehicle with a 72-hour notice and there's been a complaint, you have to move within 72 hours, we run that vehicle, and that, that registration of vehicle becomes part of the record, and that's, and it's legal to do so, we have the right to run that vehicle, see who owns it, make sure it's not stolen, et cetera. So, as we sit here tonight, do I have a place in the police department where we've compiled that data, you know, at our fingertips? No, we do have access to it, though.
So, anecdotally, do you have any, or would you feel comfortable saying how many are local, how many are not local?
I would say, I would say probably the majority of the vehicle, and again, I wouldn't put a percentage on it, I would say more than not aren't registered locally. However, that can be deceiving in that there are a lot of times where people may be Pacificer residents that are, you know, were housed and are now currently unhoused and are living in the motorhomes, that have purchased the motorhomes, the registration address does not necessarily reflect their old address, which is also, it's, it's, it's difficult to get accurate data on that, because if they're, if they don't have a physical address, how can we expect them to keep their registration current with a physical address? Oftentimes, we'll see a peel box, or we'll see an old address, or a family member's address.
So, anecdotally, you don't feel real comfortable making a point either here, yes or no then, right?
That, that is correct.
Okay, okay. City Attorney.
And, and just, Councilmember O'Neal, before you begin, I will say that I think the Chief was referring earlier to the current municipal code section 4-7.1114 that discusses use of automobiles, campers, and trailers for human habitation. And there was a Ninth Circuit decision a few years ago now, probably, maybe more than a few years, Desert Train versus City of Los Angeles, that found a habitation or a vehicle habitation ordinance to be vague. The court found that there wasn't precise language regarding what human habitation in a vehicle meant, and therefore found that ordinance to be unconstitutional. So, many cities since that case has been decided have, have tried to specify their code ordinance to address the court's concerns relating to the Los Angeles ordinance.
Okay, and, can you just say that real quick again? It's getting late, I'm sorry. I was familiar with the Boise one, but I'm not familiar with this one.
This is an older case, I just wanted to point out to the, to the council that there was a Ninth Circuit decision that discussed human habitation in vehicles, and for that, and, and that court held that the language of the ordinance was overbroad, it was unconstitutional because it was vague. And so, many cities since then have either amended their ordinance to address the court's concerns, or have chosen not to enforce their ordinance. And in this case, I'm not sure what, what the city's position is on this, but that is a case I wanted to bring to council's awareness.
Does the city have a position or enforcement on that, or is it...
Well, that decision came out years ago, we were given the direction from the city attorney's office that our, our ordinance was likely okay.
Okay.
As, as it's written.
Does that court, or does that define what is a habitation or housing of a vehicle on a street?
That case did not deal with motor vehicles, as I recall.
Oh, it did not deal with motor vehicles, okay. Would it deal with tents, or...
No, just regular cars, people living in cars.
Just regular cars, okay. So, if we were to take and decide tonight to move forward with an ordinance, what would be the estimated, estimated date that the staff would bring back an ordinance for the city council to discuss?
We, we anticipate that we would be able to come back on the December 9th council meeting with a draft ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if I could interject there, in the, in the staff report, we say December 9th would be the earliest that we could bring information back for a draft ordinance. The second part of the recommendation for council's consideration is that if you're going to direct staff to develop an ordinance, it asks the question, when would you like to see it back? Would you like to see it back December 9th, which is the time at which, until perhaps tonight, I was expecting that the Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force was going to be presenting information to the council? Or would you like to wait until January? There's only one regular council meeting in December, so would you like to wait till after January 1st, after the UP Task Force has presented their recommendations?
Okay, so, I don't think it's real hard to see that we probably would not get four votes to do an emergency ordinance either way here, okay? So, could the city attorney for the public really discuss, if he were to bring an ordinance back on December 9th, and the council was to make a decision to vote either yes or no, how long would it take for that ordinance to be effective, enforceable, and on the rulebook?
Well, assuming we draft the ordinance and it comes back to council December 9th for our first reading, we would need a second reading. Assuming there's no amendments at the December 9th hearing to that draft ordinance, the second reading would probably have to take place in January because there's no other council meetings in December. Once the second reading occurs, then the ordinance would become effective 30 days after adoption.
So, if, if the council was to suggest that we move forward with an ordinance tonight, and it come, and as the city manager said, the earliest date it would come back is December 9th, then we're probably looking at an ordinance that would in all likelihood not even be effective till February 2020?
That's correct.
Okay, and the city manager said that, and correct me if I misunderstood it or I'm wrong, that you, that you, you think it's possible to come back December 9th, but not, it might not be possible because of, obviously, there's a lot of case law that's still percolating out there that needs to be researched, et cetera, right? For you to draft an ordinance?
Well, yeah, so, I think you're referring to the letter that was received by the...
Well, to me, the letter's criticizing an ordinance that we have not even asked to be written, is not written and everything, so that, that letter's, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we are on the same page. Yes, so, certainly, the, the city attorney's office would be doing a lot of footwork with staff between now and December 9th, but we believe we could bring a draft back to council by December 9th for council's consideration. But, there may be, council may have amendments at that time, and there may not be able, we may not be able to conduct the first reading on that date, if there are significant amendments.
And then, city manager, if I, from when we met, you're thinking that the Unhoused Task Force would probably be doing their report and presentation on December 9th, correct?
Correct, yeah, that was, the latest information I had was December 9th was the scheduled date for a presentation, but exactly what that presentation would entail or include...
Right, it would be recommendations, information, funding sources, what, you know, all the research that we've asked them to do, right? Is what you're hoping it's going to be, what council's expecting.
Yeah, that would be the hope, but I want to remind the council that, that this is an independent community task force that, you know, we, we don't control or direct, so, again, there's a little bit of a black hole in not knowing what they would intend to present on December 9th or at a later date.
Right, but I think one of the instructions we asked was that they would be coming back before the end of the year, right?
That's correct, we had said four to five months, I believe, and five months would be December.
Right, so, in all likelihood, it probably, okay. So, we have here that if we direct an ordinance today, that it probably would not even be, would not be voted on or discussed by the council to December 9th. Second reading would be the first meeting in January, and then in all likelihood, it would probably not be effective until 20, February 2020, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then the city manager feels pretty comfortable that December 9th, strong possibility that we'll get the report, so that the council will have the information. Now, do you think the president...
Yeah, I, I, I should interject there, because until tonight, when, when Ms. Holmes spoke on behalf of the task force, she mentioned January, so I don't know what, what the task force timeline is right now.
Will that, will the report from the task force, will that have, be like a, do you know, or maybe someone...
I don't, I don't know, perhaps you, perhaps Ms. Holmes can speak on behalf of the task force.
Can we open Public Careng back up?
Yeah. Go ahead, because I have some more questions, but go ahead.
So, I'm wondering if, would, if we were to consider some kind of a permit system, would that be part of this ordinance, or would it be an amendment? Or if we were to consider a permit system to allow folks who were vetted and then permitted to actually park? Or if we were to talk about changing the ordinance so that people could actually park in homeowners' driveways? So, would that be separate, or is that, would that be part of this? Does the question make sense?
If I could add something in there, because tonight's information about permit systems that exist perhaps in Berkeley or otherwise, I, I think when we talk about the city attorney coming back on December 9th about ordinance revisions, that's for, mostly related to parking prohibitions. I think the research necessary to look into how permitting program would work is probably much more involved. I don't know, and I can't say right now that we could get that completed by December 9th. We could, you know, start to look into it and try. Perhaps the Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force already has information about permit programs and alternatives. I don't know, because we haven't heard their, their results. But, I, I'd want to draw the distinction between programmatic aspects here that relate to permitting programs for parking, as well as safe parking programs, and other just sort of straight-ahead hour parking prohibitions related to public health and safety concerns.
Okay. Are you done?
Well, I don't think I'll ever be done, we're talking about this.
Okay, okay. So, I do know Palo Alto has a program where there is a permitted system, but in order to get a permit, they have to show a dump receipt, okay?
Well, and that's something we can talk about too, right, is creating a legal dump station. So, I mean, I think there's all these, I, I'm, I'm thinking maybe my passion got away with me earlier, because I do understand that there's health and safety concerns, and I do think that we can come up with ideas to address those, specifically around the dump stations. You know, there's, there is one at Pac Bay Christian Academy, there's a dump station there. So, there's, there's ways that we can actually address those concerns too, so I don't want the community to think that I don't care about that, because I actually really do.
Anita, I had a question, is, since you're probably the kind of de facto person running that, is, how do you see your report? Is it, will it be something that you're just going to do the report from the podium, and that's the first time we see the information?
Which report are you talking about?
The one that we're thinking this, that we're assuming might be done by December 9th?
Oh, so, I'm not part of the UP Task Force, so...
I thought you were.
The report isn't something that I do. I can speak to the mobile dump site, I can speak to data that you all are asking for, I can speak to that now or another time, whatever you would like.
What I was looking for was, is, obviously, it sounds like we may, where there's a possibility of having an ordinance on December 9th, we're also talking about the Unhoused Task Force doing a report slash presentation on December 9th. Would the report slash presentation from Unhoused Task Force be something that the first time we see it is the podium? Or would it be something council would have a chance to review, just like we review the council packet ahead of time?
Again, I'm not part of the UP Task Force, so I can't answer that question. I mean, you could request from them, I imagine, if they could share it with, share it with you beforehand, so it's part of your packet, but that would be something you'd need to talk to them about.
Ms. Holmes here?
Yes.
Still here?
Can you speak to it? And then, I would also like, I'd also like the opportunity to ask Anita one other question, if that's okay.
While she's there.
Okay, Anita, can you expand a little on the mobile dump station?
Yes.
I'd appreciate that so much.
Okay, so, PRC is actually in the process of getting funding from the county to do a homeless outreach specifically in Pacifica and along the coast through Half Moon Bay. As part of that, we have requested funds to be used toward, from those funds to be used to create a mobile dump station as an opportunity to do outreach to those folks. It would provide, it's a twofer, right? One is addressing community concerns about human waste, and then the other, which is why the, the county is willing to allow us to do this, is it's also an opportunity to bring them to us, instead of us going to them, establishing a relationship with them, determining what it is that they need, how can we help them become housed? It's part of a bigger thing. It's not just to address the waste, it's also about helping them become housed.
Right.
And so, that is the plan. We are expecting to get the contract signed by the county December 3rd, at which time we'll be able to spend the money. Until then, I'm not spending the money.
Right.
But, that is something that we plan to do, and the county is looking to see, again, as a pilot, because if it works here, they will expand it throughout the county and potentially fund it more, right? So, I think that we have had some help looking at different vendors to do something like that, and we would just need to talk to them. We need two things, we need a location to be able to house the truck temporarily, right, for a day or three hours or whatever, and then, we, yeah, just need to let people know that it's there, and then they can come, and they can dump, and we would have a process, basically to connect, like I said...
Connect them.
To connect them to services.
Great. Thank you.
Yes. We're excited to try it, and folks are excited to see what happens.
And it's a great way to get people connected to services or vetted, if there's a permit system. I'm going to put that out there again.
And I just want to say again, I do have data on 22 folks who are in Pacifica in motorhomes. So, of last count, it was 50, 60, or 38 back in April, 50 or so in May. I haven't done a count, but I personally went out and did outreach, and, you know, we flyer'd every single motorhome that we saw, many of which called us to say, it's my personal one, stop flyering my motorhome. But, we still flyer'd them anyways, because we thought, you know, we didn't know for sure. But, we do have data on those 22 folks, because even, and the county plans to have the countywide data in early 2020, but we have the data on Pacifica folks.
And you're sharing that with the task force?
I will be, I just literally finished looking at all the data today...
Okay.
...in preparation for this meeting, and I'm happy to share it with anybody who wants it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Me?
Yes. I don't know if you're the right person, I think you have been one of the point people working on rotating shelter...
Yes.
...concept with faith communities.
Yes.
Is it your sense that that's moving forward, that we're, there's a, like, an end in sight with that?
Yeah.
Because someone made a comment, we've talked about it a long time and such.
October, back on October 25th, we had Faith in Action pulled together a meeting of faith-based community members, and folks were interested in figuring out how to do it. We have a tentative test date again with St. Edmund's, probably, I think it's either going to be in February or March. The idea is to test it so that folks from the congregation will feel comfortable about doing it, and... doing it, and hopefully, others will follow. But I will say again, most important is to have community support. If, if we have community support, then I think that other churches will come on board. Until then, it's going to be very difficult. We have been working on this issue since 2015, 2016, and while we have a plan for something, it hasn't been implemented because there isn't enough community support. So, it comes back down to you all, really, because you are the leaders of this community, and if you show support, others will follow.
He, I-
More?
No, I was just, I saw several of the people on the task force back there, and I wondered, do you, do you have an answer, is it still to be determined?
We have no comment for tonight.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so, I don't know, I've, it's, you know, it is a tough decision, because we are dealing with human beings, and we are dealing with their lives and what they have to do, and, but we're also dealing with the people, human beings, and their lives when they are living in their houses. I really feel strongly that a lot of the issues we've heard antedotally are true. I mean, I know in the 14th, 15th century, people wore those big hats, because people threw the chamber pots out the second story of the windows, and I don't see where people in Pacifica have to wear waders to get through the parking lots here. I, in regards to them, a lot of the people being from Pacifica, given some of the issues I've heard and stories and anecdotes, and looking at the condition of some of those vehicles, you know, if you're a native Pacifican, why are you doing this to your town? I don't think the Legal Aid Society, I mean, they were criticizing and going to fire, and throw rocks and grenades at an ordinance that's not even been written yet, so I don't think, I don't know how effective that is, but I've also heard from city workers of they empty a garbage can, and they were sitting there, they decided, hey, they were by the beach, they just sat there eating their lunch, they look in the rearview mirror, and someone's coming out of an RV and filling the garbage can again within five minutes. That's not sustainable for anybody. So, I think it's, it is a tough issue, it's a regional issue, it's national, certainly statewide, if not national, issue for everybody to deal with, but we don't have any money to deal with it. Unless we can get some outside funding, we do not have the resources, and I think we're going to have a very, very tough time trying to find the location of any sort of dump station. I am certainly very open to listening to what the task force says, and that's why I was concerned about the status of the report. Is it something we're going to be able to review before December 9th? Or is it something that we're going to hear the first time, and then we're going to make a decision, yes or no, on a parking ordinance that same night? Okay, and it's something that I think we need to be able to digest, because it's only fair to the unhoused task force people, and it's only fair to both the residents of Pacifica that are very, very frustrated. 99% of the emails I get say, "Get them out of town," okay? And I think it's only fair that we can look at the unhoused task force, hear their recommendations, hear what they want to do, what their suggestions, what their funding sources are, and balance that out with the very, very real needs of the residents in Pacifica, and those that want, and what they're dealing with. The fear, I mean, I remember there was a truck, blue truck, that was in front of Cabrillo for months. The parents were really scared. They didn't know who was in that truck, the guy wasn't coming out day or night, but they could hear people in there, you know, and every once in a while, like the thing in the Addams Family, a hand would come out, you know? So, I think there's really a lot of fear on both sides. I think there's some very good reasons on both sides to do whatever action we take, whether it is ban them, or whether it is to take and, you know, not ban them, wait for unhoused task force. However, I think, given the number of people and the number, the concerns and the emails I have gotten from people, and very valid concerns from both sides, I would like to move forward with an ordinance so that we, it would be effective, so that we have it ready in case the unhoused task force cannot, does not have a solution. So, I would like to move, my preference would be to move forward with a recommendation of doing an ordinance, and then we see what the unhoused task force has, their recommendations in December.
So, Mike, when did your, when did, when did you change your mind on the safe parking program? I think you were actually one of the-
I'm very open to a safe parking program.
You were one of the initiators of it.
Yeah, I am very open to a safe parking program, okay? But I said then, and I'll say now, it has to be, we do not have the money to fund it.
Understood.
Okay, so, if we can get, I am very open to having it, I'm very willing to listen any alternatives, okay? But, things have happened, there's been incidents in town, and I don't think it's fair to, you know, whose rights are more important? I think civil decency, you know, that's it. I mean, I am not against a safe parking program, I'm very open to it, if we can find a place, if we can fund it, or get it funded, yes.
Okay, and, and so, you've heard it a lot tonight, that responsible government takes time, and we have time, so, let's remember that. I can guarantee you, probably with like 99% assurance, that when we hear from the unhoused in Pacifica task force, they're not going to have an ordinance proposal, they're not going to have a funding source, they're going to have their best ideas for some of the topics that we test them with. And it's going to take more time. We agreed as a council that we were going to wait to hear on that, in order to make any decisions, and we are preemptively making a decision here by saying that we want to have this ordinance in our back pocket. It's already in our back pocket. There's already something in our back pocket, if you want to pull it up, it's written, it's there. I don't think we need to do any more work on anything until we hear from the Up Task Force. I agree with Mary, we're doing the process of disservice. The, I think the difference between the rent board and this example is that we were going to ballot with that. So, there was sort of a different flavor here. I appreciate all of those folks who dedicate their time to it and are really coming together with some really great ideas, and I hope that we can continue to have those dialogues, and continue to find great ideas. Oakland is doing this, East Palo Alto, San Francisco's trying to come up with it, Mountain View, San Jose, Walnut Creek, I'm hearing, has at least two churches that have opened their parking lots to safe parking programs. So, it's doable, and, you know, when you hear Walnut Creek, you think, well, we're like the Walnut Creek of the coast, so we can do it too. People look to Pacifica as a model, and I, I, I want to commend Leslie for coming out tonight and sharing her story. She didn't have to do that, that was in the past for her, and she's obviously a very successful adult now. And I, I think, and I, and I, I think you came out here because you believe that sharing your story will inspire us to not let that happen to someone else, and that your experience will help us remember that we have the ability to be compassionate. People who live in our RVs are also scared of us. They live with constant anxiety, going in and out of their vehicle, who's going to say something to them? Even if it's just hello, they're, what do you want from me, or how am I going to get in trouble today? They don't want to be there either, they feel like an imposition. I feel that if we put for, if we put any more energy into moving forward with any sort of crafting of a task force tonight, we are automatically throwing our hands up in the air and saying, "Yeah, sure, Montero, we're pushing it down the road to you guys." We've all said it, it's a commu, it's a, it's a county problem, it's a regional problem. So, as leaders, let's, let's not push it down the road, let's not do what everyone else is doing, let's be the innovators. We're already halfway there, so my recommendation is to stand by our original word, and if we don't, whoever said that they don't trust the council up here, continue not trusting the council, because they are going back on their word.
We said in February, four to five months. How many months has it been? It took months to develop the task force. The problems are growing, they're not decreasing. We don't have business here to support the parking program that other cities have, we don't have business. We don't have Facebook who can pay to house the homeless, or to do a safe parking program, or Walmart, like someone suggested, that people are parking in a Walmart parking lot. We don't have that ability here. And, yeah, we already pushed it down the road. I get accused of that every day. Why did you push this down the road? And that's exactly what we did in February. Now, look at how many months have passed. I'm not saying, like I said, I'm not saying stop the task force, but it's going to take so long to develop an ordinance, I think we need to do it simultaneously.
You're already saying what your response is by asking them to craft it, you're already saying it, all three of you. So, keep saying it, and again, keep my warning.
And Deirdre, you're saying what your response is going to be already also, is that no matter what the task force comes up with-
I-
You will say, you will not look at the, what other people-
We agreed not to look at it, we agreed not to look at it.
You're playing the same violin you always play.
Well, here I go, Mike.
It's now 11:23, we have seven minutes. And we actually have two more items on the agenda.
So, if council is inclined to move to extend the meeting, we would need a motion and a second to extend the meeting again.
We can do that?
Yeah, yes, we can.
And that gives everyone in the audience the, the time to speak again?
No, she's saying to extend the meeting tonight.
Oh, oh, extend the time tonight?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
I move.
Just should mention, for the council's information, for the, for the next item regarding the hotel site, we do have a consultant here with us in participating in that, in case you're, so you know when you make your decision.
Okay.
I don't think we need to discuss this anymore, we already know what, what's-
I think, just, is this a motion item, or?
No, we need to extend the time first.
All right.
Yeah, that's a motion.
Extend the time to midnight, make a motion, extend the time to midnight.
We have two items with the, we have two items with the consultant?
For half an hour?
No, one with the consultant.
Oh.
About 12:30?
Right, 12:30.
Then we don't have to do the extension again.
Yeah.
Okay, 12:30.
I move to extend the meeting till 12:30.
My second.
Please vote. Okay, that passes five to nothing, now we can continue.
Before you make the motion that we're going to make, can I just request information on a permit system? Can you, can you bring back information for us on a permit system? Am I allowed to do that, like?
Yeah.
Great, then I just did. Thank you.
Maybe when the motion is made, that could be included as part of the direction to staff. And so, I just want to summarize what I'm, what I'm hearing from council. A majority of council members have indicated that they have health and safety concerns, and that they would like the ordinance to address those health and safety concerns. And those concerns include sanitary overflows, hazard, biohazardous waste being disposed into the wastewater system, the increase in work that recology is, or the increase in recology's efforts in picking up waste from the streets, bike and pedestrian lane, blocking access to, so blocking access to bike lanes. Unsafe car access, and I assume that means like cars exiting from driveways.
I think visual-
Visual line of sight.
Visual line of sight issue.
Passing large vehicles on the side of the road that are parked.
And cars, or, I'm sorry, and harms to pedestrians just walking, and I assume that relates to their line of sight as well.
Mm-hmm.
Did I miss anything?
And the safety issue of walking past vehicles with unknown inhabitants.
And the line of sight stuff is the only actual point that we have evidence on, everything else is pure conjecture. I would like to add one thing, in terms of a city, it wasn't just recology, but city costs associated with waste containment and addressing homeless-related, I mean, motor home-related costs that the city is bearing, not just recology. Do we have costs like that? I think our, our wastewater folks- You said yes.
So, the health and safety concerns relating to that would just be the waste disposal, is that correct?
Right.
improper waste disposal.
Right, did we not have city staff go out and take care of a cleanup of a homeless encampment that's not vehicularily housed? No, I'm talking about Park Mall. Park Mall. I'm talking about Park-
Sewerage overflow.
Yeah, that was also not confirmed. Was not confirmed as waste.
I think that, I think that that, that health and safety concern relates to waste dumping, which we've already captured.
So, that's included? Okay, that's what I was trying, I didn't hear that, I heard recology.
I think there's quite a few streets in Pacifica that are so narrow, that if you were to park RVs on them, it would definitely be a hazard in terms of passing. I don't know what the standard width of a street is in Pacifica, but especially in some districts.
That would some, be something that we definitely look at in preparation of the draft ordinance.
So, do you want a motion for that?
And don't forget about the direction for a permit system, connected possibly to a mobile dumping pilot.
I fully agree with that, yes.
So, we would need direction, or a motion and direction from council. I think the motion is to accept staff's report, and then provide direction to staff along the lines that we've discussed tonight.
So, I make a motion to accept staff's report, I also, an ordinance regarding the guidelines discussed, and information on a permit system for the city of Pacifica, examples of other cities' permit systems.
And if you could just add the timeline for bringing it back that you would like? I heard, I heard December 9th. I heard, I heard December 9th was the goal, but add that to the motion. That's the second part of the.
I guess, December 9th, if that's possible.
So a motion has been made. Is there a second?
My second.
Please vote. And that passes three to two. Moving on to.
I just want to look at you.
Good. Good.
Break?
No. But everyone here has a right to their opinion. Everyone has a right to their opinion. That's why we were all elected. We don't need to be ridiculed for our opinions. Fine. Moving on to item number 17. The 2212 Beach Boulevard Hotel Development Update Proposed Action. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll just stop there.
Wrong item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Thomas Myers, Economic Development Manager. To my left is, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I think we might need a little order called here, up here. So if we can just like all take, I don't know, we want to take a minute? Council, or, because we have another agenda item? Okay.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Thomas Myers, Economic Development Manager. To my left is Patrick O'Keefe, Consultant for Management Partners on our hotel project. I am presenting the staff report for item 17, 2212 Beach Boulevard Hotel Development Update. Our recommended action for this evening is to, number one, authorize the city manager to execute consultant contracts up to $15,000 for a hotel market study for the 2212 beach site, and if determined necessary by the city manager, up to $20,000 for hotel development broker services. And number two, for council to discuss and consider whether to continue to follow the current development timeline as approved by city council on February 26th, 2019, February 25th, 2019, or whether to direct the city manager to pursue an alternate timeline as outlined in this report. We are recommending that a hotel study be completed for the 2212 Beach Boulevard site. This will confirm the feasibility of the site for hotel development and inform us as to what type of hotel would best serve this area of Pacifica. Market study would include an assessment of regional hotel development, the effects of the online marketplace for lodging such as Airbnb, VRBO, and others. In addition, positive hotel market studies are used by hotel developers in their development processes for construction financing. The project cost of the study is approximately $15,000, and these studies are typically valid for at least six months. If the hotel study determines adequate market demand, the city would engage a hotel broker to market the site for hotel development and elicit responses to the RFQ from the development community and assist with the distribution of the RFQ. The current development schedule, which is on page 321 of your packet, shows the city would release the RFQ in July 2020 after the completion of the updates to the general plan and local coastal use plan, and the completion of this Sharp Park specific plan, which is scheduled for June 2020. This current timeline would include a recommendation to the city manager to counsel of the preferred development team for the hotel site in February 2021. If authorized, the hotel market study would be completed prior to the release of the RFQ in July 2020. This timeframe and structure was considered to be the most expedient process to secure the required land use entitlements and give potential hotel developers more certainty with the process. An alternate development schedule, which is on page 323 of your packet, includes an accelerated schedule where the city manager makes a recommendation to council of the preferred development team for the hotel site in the July-August 2020 timeframe. There are risks associated with the alternative development schedule. Our recent discussions with experienced hotel development consultants confirmed that completing the city entitlements process outlined in the current development schedule provides a more certain development process for potential hotel developers. In addition, the alternative development schedule will have workload impacts on current staff resources. Both the current development schedule and the alternative development schedule are listed on Attachment A, page 325 of your packet for comparison. There's approximately a six-month difference in the timeline between the two schedules. In assessing the strengths of each development schedule, the current development schedule gives developers more certainty with the development process, and this process is preferred by hotel consultants. It minimizes the risk to secure the required land use entitlements. Under the current schedule, the updates to the general plan and local coastal use plan, as well as the Sharp Park specific plan, would be completed prior to the release of the RFQ. Additionally, there are no extra fiscal year 1920 work plan or staff resource impacts on the current schedule. Under the alternative development schedule, the development process would potentially be completed approximately six months earlier than the current development schedule. Both staff and our consultant are available to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thomas, can you go back to slide eight, just real quick? Or one more? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead. Okay, I looked at it. It's okay. You can go on. Yeah.
I'm done. I was done.
Questions?
So which was the preferred schedule?
Uh, that.
Or alternative?
Well, we are looking for council direction on which schedule to approach.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's really, so there's, there's two items. One relates to the funding for the market study, as well as for the hotel development broker funding. So get direction from the council on that. Concerning the, the schedule, it's, there's pros and cons to both of them. And the existing schedule that the council had approved in February was the one that, based on our research and discussing with the hotel development community, when you have a project that brings the most certainty to the entitlements, that generates the most interest in, in a project site. So that's the current schedule, which essentially was to go back out with the RFQ, RFP, after the general plan and the Sharp Park specific plan were done. So that would be in mid-2020 doing that. There's a lot of moving pieces and, you know, related to this site. So the concept of a parallel track schedule that tries to expedite the hotel development process came up. And that's the alternative schedule that pushes it up about six months. It's an intense workload to come out with the, to make the developer team selection in the July-August timeframe of next year. So, but the positives that are related to that is you start the process sooner, and in the end, you have a hotel that's developed sooner. So there's really pros and cons to both. It's council's discretion to decide which ones. The, the more intense alternative schedule, the only thing I want to point out related to that, since that's not currently on this year's work plan of projects, there, I can't, I can't enumerate what the staff resource impacts would be, but there, you know, it's going to be an intense six months just focused on the hotel. So there could be some impacts to other priorities that, that we're working on. And I would keep the council apprised of what those impacts are as we move along.
That would be my question, is if we expedited, what would actually be impacted on our 1920 goals? That would be my question. I, I would have no problem with the expedited, as long as we know what, what, what we wouldn't be doing next year.
So like, like a lot of the sort of mid-year projects that, that aren't planned for, that arise, you know, it's, it's hard to enumerate exactly what wouldn't get done. We'll make progress on all of the council priority projects this year. It's just that some of those milestones may move more slowly than others. You know, the, the Plan Pacifica process will continue on schedule. That's a, that's a very high priority one. But it, it really, with this project, it relates to my time, to, to Economic Development Manager Myers' time, to the city attorney's office time, all wrapped into this hotel development team. So, you know, some of my energies would be focused on this, perhaps, rather than, than other projects. But it's, you know, it's difficult to, it's not like one project's not going to get done. We'll still make progress on all of the, all of the projects. And as we move along, again, I'd make sure to keep the council members informed about how our workload is proceeding.
Well, I just, I wanted, I'm sorry, I forget your name, the consultant. What is the current market for hotel development? Is it still as hot? Has it been cooling down? Because I'm just concerned with, we're getting closer and closer to some sort of recession and potentially higher interest rates, although that, I don't know how that's going to go. You know, can you give a brief synopsis?
So Pat O'Keefe with Management Partners. So there always is that recession risk out there, because, you know, we're always in cycles. Right now, the market's still strong. If you delay six months, will that, you know, push you into a zone where things aren't feasible? I don't think so at this point. What I'm concerned about, in addition to what the city manager described as the workload impacts and the potential impacts on, on your other priorities, what I'm concerned about is that you've already been out to market twice with this project. I think when you go out this third time, you really need to do it right, which is why we're making the recommendations about having a broker help with the process, and also doing the, the market analysis in order to show potential developers and hotel operators that you really have as strong a site as, as you can. And along with that, I really think that as, as much of the permit processing that can be finished first, so your general plan, your specific plan, your local coastal permit, if that can all be in place before you're soliciting proposals, that's just going to help generate a better response. And so following that logic, then, I would keep the current schedule rather than the, the more aggressive alternative schedule.
My question is, weren't we told at one point that we would be likely selecting a hotel developer in July of 2020? We've already, we already have RFP and RFQ sent out. This is a little bit different, because we no longer have the library on this site, nor the statement in the RFQ about Ocean Discovery Center. So those items will change this, but it seems like it's, I don't know, that might be for the better.
Oh, absolutely, that helps. But I, in the meantime, though, there's something that wasn't present before the last time you went out, and that was the creation of a specific plan. So now, as, as a developer, if I'm responding to an RFP that says we have this specific plan in process, and you want me, as part of the RFP, to show you my ideas on paper about what it is that I think that can be developed, so that'll mean some kind of site plan, I need to know what your specific plan says before I can develop the site, that site plan. Because your specific plan's going to have things like height and density and setbacks and all of those kinds of details around design that I, as developer, will need to know in order to adequately respond to your RFP.
I, I just want to add to that, that the February schedule decision didn't indicate the developer selection by mid-2020. It was to complete the specific plan and the general plan by mid-2020, and then release the RFQ. So the, the actual developer selection would be much later than that.
I don't remember anything in February. I mean, I don't remember anything in 2021 at all.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not recalling there ever being a schedule until developing this alternative accelerated schedule that had developer team selection by mid-2020.
I have a question about, so I understand the need to, to do a hotel market study, but you mentioned a feasibility study. Are those two different things?
No, they're the same.
And so does a feasibility study address, like, the soil and the smell from the, the former sewage treatment plant? Because there's still smells coming out of it.
It's the pump station, though.
Okay, well, is it addressing that?
It would not address that. That would be something that would have to be done separately. And I'm not sure if that, without talking with staff, I'm not sure if that would be done by staff or if it would be an engineering consultant that's, that's brought on board later by the developer.
And I, I can speak to that. As, as the council may remember, we are addressing the odor issues related to the pump station. And the council authorized a design contract for improved odor controls on the pump station. So that design is currently underway. What will follow that design is the actual construction of those improvements. So in terms of the timeline, actual construction of those improvements could happen in the next fiscal year. I don't know the precise timeline related to that. But, but again, that's another aspect to, the difference here is maybe sort of this qualitative one that Mr. O'Keefe can speak to. But the difference for a proposer about if odor control has been funded and constructed versus its plan to be constructed.
Right.
So that, that changes their perception of the project. I'm saying that, you know, I think it's feasible that if you've designed it and you intend to fund it, and by budget adoption of the next year, in June, it's funded to be implemented, that sends a pretty strong message to a developer as well.
Okay, thank you.
We do have the card from the public.
Aaron.
If any, do you have, do people still have more questions, or?
I have some questions, but we can hear from the public.
Okay. Aaron Macias?
Good evening again. I'm Erin Macias. Thank you. I don't want to keep you long. I just would really like to encourage you to move forward on a shorter timeline. As long as I lived here, we've, not as long as I've lived here, but it's, we've had a lot of conversations about these potential plans for the city. And I also want to also just kind of reinforce to, to a couple of our council members that the TOT and the tourist income is what we need to provide the types of services that you want to offer the unhoused.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council, seeing no one else who wants to speak on this item.
I had a question, because there's been, some people mentioned about basically doing an RFQ that says something like the city has these goals, transit occupancy tax, retail sales tax, et cetera, and letting the developers almost paint the canvas. You know, give them, the developers a blank canvas, and if they want to put some housing on there, they put some housing, as long as we get transit occupancy tax. Is that a marketing or RFQ that you would recommend? Or have thoughts on?
I think that would depend on what the market study said. One of the things we're thinking about putting in the scope of the market study, not only our thoughts, but what those hotel individuals, those individuals from, in the hotel development community, that would respond to our scope of services for Hotel Market Study, they would help us craft that before they completed the study. So, there could, because there have been other examples in other cities of mixed use, both commercial and housing, as well as condo developments and hotels. Those aren't as popular as they used to be, but it's always a possibility. We would want them to consider what's the, you know, best and highest use of this land. So, that's possible that that could happen.
Thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion? I haven't heard anybody talk.
I just want to ask a question, and then I'll think I'm ready to make a motion unless there's more conversation. Could I ask staff and our consultant, in terms of these two alternatives that have been offered, the current development schedule and the alternative development schedule, something that you said resonated with me about doing this right and making sure we've gone out twice already? And my question is, is there, in your view, adequate time in the alternative development schedule to accomplish that?
So, what concerns, what concerns me about the alternative development schedule is that if you push the RFP and RFQ process out sooner than you have finished your general plan and specific plan adoption, there's going to be uncertainty there. As a developer, I would look at that and I would say, "Ooh, the city's doing these two plans. What does that mean? What are the plans going to contain? What are the requirements in the plans? I need to know that before I know whether or not I want to respond to this and in what way I'm going to respond to it." And so, if I can't, you know, I'll call staff and I'll start asking questions about, well, you know, what is this about? And what are the things that are being considered? And what do you think the likelihood of it is being adopted? And what could change? So, there's all those uncertainties that if you simply wait until you have those things adopted, you can say to the developer, "See attached specific plan," and they know exactly what it is they're responding to. And I think you get a better response.
Thank you.
But then we could look at doing that part of the specific plan first, correct? So that a developer would know. We want, because we've, every plan we've ever published in the city here has been a hotel on that site. Okay, there's like, and there even seems to be, you know, community consensus that a hotel and some retail probably on that site. So, I don't know if the specific plan's going to come up with anything different. Then, now, in regards to the height limits and stuff like that, that's almost kind of dictated by the Coastal Commission because they don't have, they have a height limit of 35 feet, if I'm correct, you know?
We do.
Well, Coastal Commission has two. So, unless we can get an exception because there's housing in part of it or something, I don't know. But it would not be feasible?
If I could jump in, I think one of the key milestones is related to the environmental review and Coastal Commission action on the specific plan. So, the specific plan has to go through environmental review before it's adopted. The general plan does not. So, that's one variable to a developer having the environmental review done on a project and it being adopted by the city council. That's not going to happen until, right now, the schedule is June of 2020. One piece that is good certainty here, and what makes even the accelerated schedule feasible at all, is that right now, we're on target for the LCP to be adopted by the council for the local coastal plan, which sets forth the land use designation for the hotel site to accommodate a hotel. That's on target to be adopted by February. So, that's at least some local action certainty. We still have the uncertainty of the Coastal Commission's action on the LCP, which could range from three months to a year, which we don't know.
Or three years? Right? No, three years. At what point do you sit there and say, "We got to get off the pot"?
Yeah, I should say, three months to a year for them to even consider it, but at that point, they, it might be, you know, comments that they make on our LCP that the council doesn't accept, so that we wouldn't have an adopted LCP. So, there's uncertainty related to that, but the local council action in February is important. But then, the next step in sort of milestone uncertainty for developers is the local action related to the specific plan, the adoption of it and what it entails.
Timeline for that is July 2020. Is that right? June?
I think it's June. I think it's, the general plan and specific plan, I think are June of 2020, right now.
June, okay.
I have a question. Why are we authorizing a $15,000 market study in November of 2019 when we're not going to have the specific plan done or the RFQ released until July of 2020? I mean, if I were going to get a loan on a property next year, I certainly wouldn't have an appraisal or a study done now because anything could change. The market could drop for hotel uses, the rates could go up or down, and there's a lot involved there.
Sure. The authorization now is in anticipation, if the council were to say, "Let's do the accelerated schedule." Also, if we did do it now, they generally, depending on market conditions, can be good for six months, so it would still apply to the schedule we're currently on. But if the council's interest was, "Let's stick with this schedule and not go out with the RFQ until the middle of 2020," then we don't necessarily have a rush on the market analysis, and we could wait. An element of the market analysis that will be informative to our entire process is, it'll give us sort of, which bucket are we in? Really good, you know, sort of good or not good? And if we're in the not good bucket, not feasible bucket, then we need to come back to the drawing board anyways. That's not what we anticipate, but, you know, we need to do the study to know.
Want to make a motion?
Yes, well, I got to find the paper that says what the motion is. Hold on. I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute consultant contracts, up to $15,000 for a hotel market study for the 2212 Beach Boulevard site, and if determined necessary by the city manager, up to $20,000 for hotel development broker services. Does the motion need to include the timeline then, the selection of?
I think we'd like to get that direction in the motion itself, but it's, maybe first we get a consensus from the council on the direction, since I didn't hear that. But you can go ahead, you can go ahead and make the motion with the direction that you would like to include in the motion.
With the direction that we follow the current development schedule.
So, the motion has been made. Is there any second?
But that, can I say something? But that would mean that it would happen before the specific plans were finished? No, okay. Thank you.
It's the one that has the specific plan.
It is late. Okay. I'll second.
Sue's holding her head.
Sorry.
So, you're, can you repeat the?
So, you're saying that we don't have anyone coming in, we're not even looking at the RFPs until January of 2021?
Yes.
So, correct on, Thomas has the slide up there. So, it's to release the RFQ in July of 2020, and then there are the other milestones.
But even if it happened sooner and the plans weren't in place, then there wouldn't be any takers anyway, right?
Would there be more uncertainty?
More uncertainty, yeah.
If I understood, okay.
It's only been like 20 years that we worked on this site to try to get something built here. Guess another year doesn't make that much difference.
My gosh, I know there's people who would disagree with you, but...
I was being facetious, sorry.
I know.
There was a second.
Okay, there was a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, that passes four to one. And moving on, the last item on the agenda. A consideration of a new City of Pacifica logo design.
Thank you, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I have a very brief presentation here, and then council member O'Neill, who introduced this item to the Economic Development Committee, may want to add some information. So, up on the projection screen, you have a proposed new logo for the city, and council member O'Neill introduced that to the Economic Development Committee back in August, and as part of the packet, there's a support letter from the Economic Development Committee about this new logo design and the idea that it, while the current logo is aesthetically pleasing, the logo on the left up there, that it doesn't sufficiently differentiate Pacifica from other coastal communities, and that the new logo with the whale tail, et cetera, on it puts our city on the map and reinforces our identity, is a quote from the letter from the EDC. And I'll stop there and ask council member O'Neill if he wants to add additional information about it.
I just brought this forth because there was two members of the Economic Development Committee that both were, worked for marketing agencies, and they actually went to some marketing agencies and they developed this as a logo. And they felt that it would be more distinctive for Pacifica and a little bit different because we, they then kind of registered us with like the whale trail. I guess there's a Facebook group that's the whale trail, and we do have a lot of people come and watch the whales and stuff, and it's an annual event here, April through October. So, I brought this forth to the Economic Development Committee, and, you know, now I'm bringing it forth to council to see if council wants to change it, you know, at the request of these people.
We have a card from the public, so there's probably no questions, just deliberations. So, we're going to go to the public, and we have Pat Kramer. Sorry, Patricia.
That's okay. This is going to be extemporaneous. I usually like to prepare my comments. I'm active in the Pacifica Historical Society, and we had a board meeting tonight, and it was kind of surprising that really nobody knew about this. I kind of just accidentally ran across the agenda for tonight, and it looked interesting, and I kind of looked it up. I think that we might value having a little broader group discussion about something like a city logo, because we appreciate that the whales are something that people come to see, but like with the more generic view of the coastline, we're certainly not the only place you can see whales. And so, that's one, that's one thing that we would like maybe to see a group, a broader group of people who have some real in-depth understanding of the uniqueness of Pacifica and its history, look at this logo question. Just on a personal note, I really hate those things that look like compass points. To me, it looks like the NATO symbol. Just, thank you.
Thank you. We have another card, Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. I'm Tiger Jazz Trolls, Big Stick of Pacifica. I really don't like the yellow color. I have ideas how the original logo, I think if it had a pear in it, would be really charming. But I really don't have a problem with the new logo. It's fine. I really don't like the yellow color. Maybe I like blue? Thank you.
So, seeing the other cards, we'll bring this back to council.
Okay, so I've had people actually question the logo that we have right now, like, "When did it change? How come we weren't involved? I didn't know anything about that." And it's been, what, four years only or five or something? And so, in my opinion, we shouldn't be making any changes on a city logo right now.
Just, I just wanted to make one frame of reference is, we used to have Medusa. Remember the?
Not Medusa.
Well, that's what city staff calls it, is Medusa, okay? And the city manager at that point decided, just changed it, and there was no vote authorization to change it to City of Pacifica. So, the official logo by city council is still Medusa.
It's the Statue of Pacifica.
Pacifica.
Which nobody knows that is, okay? They all look at it and think it's Medusa.
And no offense, but I mean...
No, I won't be offended either way.
Graphic design is an art, and so, if we were going to do any kind of changes, we would have to have like a study session and get a bunch of ideas in, and I'm just not inclined to be ready to do that right now. So, there's my two cents.
I'm not going to be offended either way, to be really honest with you, you know?
I normally think that if you have a committee and the committee makes a decision, that usually we should stand by the committee, although in this case, I like the existing logo. I don't like this logo. The comments I've heard from the public are pretty amazing. I had to look it up because I had no idea what they were talking about with the reference to whale tail, and...
Whale trail.
No.
Tail.
Oh.
Whale tail. I have a whale tail on my phone, on my car. I really like the whales, and if you were going to do something that way, maybe add a whale fins to the existing logo. But I think it's a costly, expensive item to try to change logos. I like the one we have. Sorry, I spoke out of turn again.
No, I like the one we have. It's, you know, denotes our environment as our economy. I think a whale also does that. I'm also not favorable of the compass rose. The compass rose is actually the symbol of the organization that I work for outside of council. So, it reminds me, I'm like always at work. And I, and when I look at the City of Pacifica logo, it's like, ah, I get to work outside. It's nice. So, that's my two cents. And we did get some negative, extremely negative feedback from the community. And the whale tail, there's a whale tail grant that the Pacifica Beach Coalition gets every year, so there is a positive connotation. And also, the whale tail that's on your license goes towards environmental.
Mm-hmm.
You know that, so...
I do.
So, there is a positive connotation to it.
Actually, we did get a tail, not a tail, a sign. Actually, we did get a tail, not a tail, a sign from NOAA because of the whale sightings. So, you know, I, I could be offended either way. I'm bringing it forth like I was requested, that's all.
I have one more comment. If we were going to do something like this, maybe we could put it out to the public, like they do the mermaid for the Fog Fest, and let the public bring us back logos. I'm still not in favor of it, though, of changing.
Nor am I.
Changing at all, okay.
No, I'm not at this time in favor of changing.
Make, somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion to not accept this new logo and keep our current logo. Second.
Please vote.
Since I brought it to council, I have to vote. I have to vote, because I brought it to.
So that concludes our meeting. I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of former mayor Fred Howard, who served as mayor from 1988 to 1989, who recently passed away, and thank you very much.